There we go. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our March 12th, 2024 Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our meeting both in person and virtually, and we're glad that you've joined us tonight for this meeting. During the public participation and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand virtually, and our staff will unmute your microphone and announce your name. You will then be able to make comment for the topic at hand. We will start with members of the public who are here in council chambers with us tonight, and then those joining us remotely. We will have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning and one towards the end. Participation is limited to once per a public participation session. And then we do ask that participants keep their comments to three minutes or less. Thank you again for joining us tonight. We will now begin with moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
But allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we can start tonight off with the roll call, Mr. Krack.
Ms. Berkeley.
President.
Mr. Carmenito.
Right.
Ms. Dugan.
Here.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Strunfeld.
President.
Mr. Weiss.
President.
Mr. Evil.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager, Assistant's here. Acting Chief is here. Solicitor's here. You have a court.
Thank you. With that, we have no presentations on tonight's agenda, so we will be beginning with our first round of public participation. Any members joining us in the council chambers tonight, if you want to make your way to the podium, we do ask that you provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet that's on the podium, and then when we can comment, counsel, if you provide your name and whether you're a resident or a business owner here in the borough.
And I would add specific to tonight, if you have public comment related to the conditional use hearing or the land development that is on the agenda, those comments can be held until we discuss those agenda items.
Good evening. My name is Janine Tropey. I am an independent contractor as a realtor and a photography company owner in Phoenixville. I live on Bridge Street. I moved here over a year ago because I was told so much about the community as a person who has visited frequently. I enjoyed the weekends, the nights out, as well as space outside during the summers. However, moving to Phoenixville has greatly impacted my view. I will say the parking issue, I know it's a joke, but it's not. As someone who, three months in, when my lot, my car is parked in a permitted lot, which again, isn't really a permitted lot when it's shared with the public, which is a whole nother issue, was damaged with $7,000 worth of damage because two people were fighting over one spot, and the poor girl trying to back out didn't see my car. Since then, I have spent upwards of 10 to 20 minutes every day trying to find spots. And I'm talking today alone. I almost didn't have time to get here because I spent 24 minutes trying to find a spot between the three permitted lots. Since then, I have tried to find other locations. I parked on Church Street and got a ticket because apparently that's permitted, but a separate permit, not the permit I'm valid for. I parked one street over, got another ticket. I parked on Bridge Street, was told, oh, I'm sorry, that day, even though there was no signs up, we were street cleaning. So you have to pay a fine there. Then I just found out that my permit is all but useless now because in December, under ordinance 2023, it was changed that permits no longer have to be limited to the number of spots available. So now, not only am I competing against the public for spots, I'm competing against people who actually live in the borough and people that work, but now I'm like going against permits for spots that don't exist. What is, I don't understand the point of, let's say, giving out 200 permits when there are only 100 spots available, and of that 100 people that don't even have permits can park there. It's making living here unbearable, to be honest, to the point that I've had to, as a realtor, warn clients about this. Do not live in the borough if you do not have a driveway because parking is that bad. And now we're talking about bringing a train, and we don't even have parking for what we have here. And we're building new developments, and you can tell me all day long that you've created parking underneath those developments, but those same people have people that come on the weekends to visit them. They visit, they take up the same spots, and then someone like me is spending so much of my time trying to find a valid spot without getting ticketed repeatedly for finding spots that are existing in the moment. And I know you think that there's three lots, there's plenty of spots available, but two things, one, those spots are so far apart, by the time you leave the one lot to get to the other, there's five minutes of your day. So you're better off being like one of the other five to six people at any given time parking with your hazards on in the lot, and then unfortunately having to be that jerk that cuts off people. Or you have to be like my neighbor, an elderly woman who walked four blocks, said their day with all of her groceries because she couldn't find a spot. I just have to say that it's very disappointing knowing that we're putting in new electric vehicle spots that seem empty, and please don't tell me they don't because I've taken over 40 videos now of how people are searching and cutting each other off during the day, and those spots are sitting empty, or there's people parked there that don't even have an EV's car. We don't need more EV spots. We don't need more developments. We need more parking. And until you do, my friends have already told me, my friends that live in Philly that are well acquainted with street parking, they will not come to Phoenixville anymore to visit me because it's simply unbearable to find parking on the weekends, and for them, it's a mute point. They tell me to come to Philly. And that is so sad to think of that we're being equated as having worse parking than Philadelphia. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Nice to see all of you. My name is Chris Keller, and I live in the borough of my Reeves Park. I wanted to thank you all for your recent approval of so many wonderful community events, and thank you for hearing the need to revisit and reduce the costs for policing, cleaning, and all the other things that go with it. I am grateful to these unique festivals in Phoenixville, Blob Fest, Pride Fest, Firebird Festival, Art Street Festival, Multicultural Festival, Juneteenth, First Fridays, and more, and Borough Council's support of all of these events. They are eclectic and inclusive and have resulted in Phoenixville being a destination town all year round. I am concerned about the perceived cost-benefit impact to our community. I'm sure you are aware that the dramatic jump in costs this year caused a bit of panic for many of these event organizers, many of them volunteers. In 2023, the Juneteenth event paid $460 to the borough, which is, which this year, what jumped to $2,460, recently reduced to $1,676, but still nearly four times what the previous year we had paid for basically the same hours and the comparable event. Yes, events cost the borough money, and prices everywhere have gone up. However, it would have been helpful to have been, had an estimate of expected increases earlier in the process so that all the community organizers could budget appropriately. Together, we talk about how wonderful our town is, how open, accepting, and growing. As we give presentations, solicit sponsors, and write grants, these community events are part of that unique story, which includes our small northern Chester County town hosting the Chester Countywide Pride Fest. My understanding is several years ago, the borough encouraged the events to move from Reeves Park into downtown. This request often resulted in significant changes to the event. For example, Pride Fest transitioned from a performance primary event to a vendor event since Bridge Street does not have a ban shell or seating. And yet, the new version of Pride Fest has brought even more people into town. It's a good move, but there were costs. I ran a nonprofit on the 200 block of Bridge Street for about 10 years. I've cleaned up trash, half-finished drinks and beers, and more in front of Orion's office, particularly during the weeks of St. Patty's Day and Cinco de Mayo, but all year round. While not sanctioned events, are the local drinking establishments also paying extra since they bring in increased tourists to our town? The Juneteenth Committee wondered why we are being charged for two staff and three hours each of cleanup for something that is needed every weekend. Perhaps we can collectively look at new ways to fund these expenses. Our community benefits from holding these events. Our local businesses benefit from people coming to town and deciding to return again and again. Our borough's glowing reports and grant writing benefit from the community organizing and offering these special events. Please consider creating a task force of borough staff, community event organizers, and local businesses to review the cost and impact of our community events. Perhaps a line item can be added to the borough budget to support community events or a special fundraiser held to raise funds to continue Phoenixville's fun and welcoming approach to engaging the community. Please don't discourage any of these event organizers from rethinking whether Phoenixville is the right place to hold a community event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Thomas. I'm reading first a letter from one of the other Juneteenth and Diversity in Action persons, and then just a remark of my own at the end. So there's kind of a thread here.
Ms. Thomas, could you please tell us if you're a resident or business?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a resident of Phoenixville since 1974.
Thank you.
Sure. To whom it may concern, this letter is concerning the total financial amount required to present our annual Juneteenth celebration on the 200 block of Bridge Street, Sunday, June 16, 2024. It has come to our attention that the itemized invoice given to us includes fees for police services, temporary no parking, Streets Department, Sanitation, Parking Department, and Parking Space Services, and it has been increased by over 400% from last year. Due to the fact that this event is not a fundraiser, but an enjoyable and informative affair, we, the Juneteenth Committee, are both concerned and confused about the massive differences. We thank you for taking your time to itemize each specific fee, yet we have questions regarding the changes in policies for borough-related events. In the future, we hope to continue Juneteenth celebrations on Bridge Street as it is a community event which benefits not only Phoenixville, but the surrounding areas as well. Please consider our questions and requests as it would be an advantage to everyone in the community. And then I just simply wrote, "Please open the eyes of your heart. Choose compassion. Choose joy. When you do, Phoenix will become a community, not just a borough. It will be a place where everyone matters, everyone counts, everyone thrives, and everyone creates." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Lutzker. Resident of 243 Morgan Street and president of the Phoenixville Green Team. Phoenixville Borough has committed to 100% renewable energy in the future and has had a leadership role in working towards that goal. I'd like to talk to you tonight about Community Choice Aggregation, CCA. So a number of boroughs in the area have come together and formed, I don't know if it's a coalition, but under the umbrella of CCA for PA. And they include Narberth, Swarthmore, Media, Lansdowne, and Hatborough.
Go on.
Okay. So these boroughs have come together in order to go to the PUC and request authority, declaratory ruling to operate a CCA within the borough, and they're signing an MOU to get basically first rights to do so, hoping to get a ruling, and if there is a positive ruling, it may be for a pilot project for those boroughs that have signed that MOU. There, this group is hosting a webinar on Thursday, March 21st, at 10:30 in the morning. I will forward to everyone details on that webinar, and I hope very much that you'll be able to attend. We're expecting Phoenixville to continue to take a leadership role in the area to move towards 100% renewable energy and a healthy environment. We've already shown ourselves to be leaders in the region, in the Commonwealth, dare I say nationally. I think I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move over to the Zoom platform. Any members joining us remotely? If you want to raise your hand digitally, we'll have a member of staff unmute you.
Mr. DeLuca, your microphone's on.
Good evening, council. I have two items that I'd like to bring to your attention tonight. First is an illegal dump
on Vander Slice.
Sorry. Could you please let us know whether you're a resident or a business owner?
Yes. Sorry. Yeah, I knew you had my name. Yes, I am a resident, 225 Ashburn Road.
Thanks, Tom.
Sure. So again, back to an illegal dump that you may be aware of. It's on the southwest corner of Vander Slice and Gay Street, just over the bridge. There's a parking lot there. It's something I meant to bring to your attention last year. It was old, existing, and honestly, in the warmer months with the vegetation, it grows over, and you kind of forget about it. This year, I noticed it a month or two ago. I'm finally here raising it. But since then, just passing by recently, it's now active again. There's a lot more debris thrown there. There's some appliances, carpet. It's quite a bit. So I would just ask that the administration, along with council, you know, maybe have public works take a look at it and see if, you know, we can solve that before it becomes more of a problem than it is. The second item is the Renaissance School pickup line and that problem that unfortunately still exists. I would like to thank Mr. Kirchner and Mr. Moore and, you know, Policy Committee and Infrastructure Committee for working it through there, then bringing it to you guys last month to pass that ordinance regarding no standing or parking on Fillmore Street. But unfortunately, this problem is one that I call like a whack-a-mole problem. You guys prevent cars from now standing there, and these, you know, parents picking up their children have moved elsewhere. So now they wait in Fillmore Village. They cut through our neighborhood from the south. They come in from Utley, sometimes in a hurry. And occasionally, they will park on spots on Ashburn Street, which, you know, maybe is okay, but frequently still, they're just standing in the road starting around 10 after 3, waiting for the line to open up, and then to go up Fillmore Street. They block the exit of the neighborhood, the little section of bunning between the curve there on Fillmore into the neighborhood. And it's a problem. And honestly, I don't think this problem gets solved without cooperation and the school playing a major role in the solution. I believe they need to help solve this problem utilizing their property that they have. I do not believe Renaissance has been a good steward of Phoenixville Borough. And whether the borough can help in any way with suggesting a spot or sharing a borough-owned property for them to wait, I don't know if that's a possibility, but the school needs to play a role, and I would ask that you guys, once again, step in and try to find a solution because even if we get them out of Fillmore Village, maybe it will move to the south side, just on the other side of the property. It will just keep moving until a real solution is found. That's all. I appreciate your time.
That's Tom.
Megan, I've turned on your microphone.
Everyone, my name is Megan Eltrinham. I live at 1127 Utley Alley as a Phoenixville resident. I also am from Fillmore Village, that community, and kind of what Tom was expressing to you guys, we appreciate you helping to solve, you know, part of that problem on Fillmore Street with the Renaissance School traffic and getting those signs put up. So we appreciate that. There's just another half of the problem, as Tom was mentioning, that we kind of just need to get solved together. Now, since these cars aren't, you know, able to stop on Fillmore, they're moving back into the neighborhood, and, you know, I personally, as well as my neighbors, have had problems. If, you know, I'm working from home and I need to go drive to a client, I'm not able to exit my own neighborhood to go make my living, as well as, you know, go to a doctor appointment or come back from a doctor's appointment, and I'm not able to park in my own residence area, and it's kind of causing traffic problems for, you know, all the neighbors involved, as well as safety issues with people, you know, zooming through the neighborhood because they're frustrated in getting in line to wait for the pickup area. So I'm, like Tom mentioned, I think we need to work with the school to finalize that resolution, and I'd appreciate you guys' help with that. So thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Any other members of the public wishing me a comment during this first round of public participation? Seeing none, we'll close the first round, move on with our agenda here. We will have another round later in the agenda. With that, we have our consent agenda as item five. We will be pulling item C3 and putting that under the Parks and Rec Committee readout. So item C3 will pull from consent. Any other items for council that wishes to alter?
C3 is the fireworks display at Dayton Street.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other items under consent? Seeing none? No. What is council's pleasure?
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Ms. Berkeley, second, and Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion. Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And with that, we'll move on to Communications Council Participation and the updates over the last month that council would like to make. Ms. Berkeley?
You know, I love to talk. So I just, I know we're going to talk about this. Ms. Dugan will have this in her updates from Parks and Rec or from Rec Board, but we did celebrate our 175th anniversary officially on March 6th. There'll be lots of celebrations throughout the borough, throughout the season, but that was the official birthday. So that was when we did become a borough of Phoenixville, March 6th. So that did recently pass. Last month was Black History Month, but every third Thursday, the Colonial and Forever Changes are celebrating the black culture and artists of color with a different type of musical guest. I got to enjoy it last month. Michael Roman performed. And then this month, so next Thursday, they will have a slam poetry, so something to check out and celebrate all different cultures within our community. April 6th, Barnstone Live will be having their live auction event. If you guys know Barnstone, it's a really cool event. You can see some art made, really affordable art that goes to a good cause. Ant Heart will have their murder mystery on Bridge Street, April 27th. And as a member of the Civil Service Commission, I am proud to say that we did have several applications that we've been going through, and we are actively in the application process or the the interview process for filling two new officers.
Thank you, Ms. Berkeley. Any other comments or updates from Mr. Kirchner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to sort of echo what Mr. DeLuca had brought up earlier about the lot on Vander Slice Street. That's the old, believe it or not, it's the old Pennsylvania Railroad Station parking lot. It is private property. And I also noticed, besides the volume of trash there, there are at least two untagged vehicles parked in that lot. So I just want to bring that to the staff's attention. I know they've intervened before with the owner to get that cleaned up. So, but I'm glad Mr. DeLuca brought that up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other comments or updates from council? Seeing none. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to those who are here in the room with us. Thank you to those of you who are joining us virtually. Quick updates for you. I wanted to congratulate the partners creating community. It's a nonprofit that has opened at 260 Bridge Street, the new Hartstone Pastry Shop. Also, a big congratulations to the Phoenixville Community Education Foundation for their Phantom fundraiser. A special thank you to the Girl Scouts who meet at St. John's Lutheran for their invitation to come and visit with them, and also to the students who participated in the SpongeBob musical at the middle school. It was extraordinary. If you've ever had a chance to watch it, I would highly encourage it. Some upcoming events that we have on the 21st of this month after St. Patrick's Day, we will be having an Irish wake at the Senior Center. I would highly encourage you to check it out. It's a very unique way to have, a very fun way to have a difficult conversation. It starts with an Irish wake downstairs and then has an end-of-life fare component upstairs. And so it's a fun way to start a very difficult conversation, perhaps with your loved ones. So check that out at the Senior Center, a very creative program, highly suggested. It has grown over the years. On the 22nd, I believe, is the Casino Royale, which is to benefit Orion Communities, and that's taking place at Rivercrest. If you check out Orion's website, you'll be able to find out more information about that. In addition, I would like to join Ms. Berkeley in wishing all of you a very happy 175th anniversary. I also want to give a special shout out to Ms. Berkeley, Ms. Dugan, and a number of our staff members, Kelly, Meg, Megan, Jean, who have all been participating for a number of months in 175th Anniversary Celebration Committee. And with that, I have a very special presentation on behalf of the Office of the Mayor, and that is a proclamation. Whereas the borough of Phoenixville, situated in Chester County, Pennsylvania, has a rich history dating back to its original settlement in 1732, evolving from the Manavon area to its incorporation as the borough of Phoenixville in 1849. And whereas Phoenixville's early economic growth was propelled by the establishment of the French Creek Nail Works in 1790, later renamed Phoenixville Iron Works, which became a leading producer of iron and steel products in the United States. And whereas the cultural heritage of Phoenixville is preserved through landmarks such as the Colonial Theater, known for its iconic role in the 1958 film The Blob, and annual events like the Dogwood Festival and Firebird Festival, which celebrates the town's unique history and community spirit. And whereas the 175th anniversary of the Phoenixville Borough is a testament to the enduring spirit and resilience of our residents, past and present, who have contributed to our growth, prosperity, and cultural vitality over the centuries. Now, therefore, I, Peter J. Urschler, mayor of the borough of Phoenixville, do hereby proclaim this year, beginning March 6th, 2024, to be Phoenixville's 175th birthday in Phoenixville, and encourage all our departments of government, businesses, and citizens of the borough to join together in observing this year with appropriate ceremonies and activities to celebrate our joint impact and ongoing commitment to the Phoenixville community. Congratulations. I think we look great for 175 years old. It's not often I get an applause during my report. I also want to point out that we have, you know, our incredible team here, you know, certainly led by Jean and Kelly and Meg, have also put together a great spot on our website. If you go to phoenixville.org, make sure you're also subscribed to all of our social channels, but you can find out all of the special 175th anniversary events that have been planned by that committee, as I said, being led by Ms. Berkeley and certainly with the help of Ms. Dugan. The biggest ones coming up on April 20th, we're going to have the Borough of Phoenixville's 175th Birthday Party, and that's going to be at our rec center. On the 4th of May, we're going to have a first responder barbecue and movie at our Phoenixville Fire Department. And on the 18th of May, make sure you take a note of this, but we will have our normal Dogwood Parade, but it will be expanded this year to celebrate also the 150th anniversary of our Phoenixville Fire Department. And so we also want to wish them a very happy anniversary, and I would be remiss with Lieutenant Nemec sitting next to me to also not wish our Phoenixville Police Department the happy 175th anniversary as they are also celebrating at the same time as the borough. So congratulations to the borough, our police and fire departments on the So congratulations to the borough, our police and fire departments on these extraordinary milestones, and congratulations certainly to all of you.
Thank you, Mayor. With that, on our section, or item eight of tonight's agenda, we have our monthly call for residents looking to join boards, committees, or commissions with the borough. We do have a number of vacancies that currently exist or are expecting to exist on civil service, human relations, tree advisory, and zoning hearing board. If any of these items or any future openings may be of interest to you, please reach out to a councilperson or staff, and we'd be happy to walk you through the process. It is pain free, and we cannot run without the continued support of about 100 volunteers who take part on our various boards and committees. So that's that. With that, we will need a mid-meeting executive session. This executive session will be to discuss matters of personnel related to sanitation employment, appointments related to civil service, zoning hearing, planning, and attorney-client privileged advice on conditional use hearing procedure. With that, can we have a motion?
I will make a motion to recess into executive session.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. We will be back momentarily from executive session. Okay, it's 7:56 and we're returning from executive session. Do we need a motion to do that, Scott?
Sure. So moved.
Motion by Ms. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Councils?
Aye.
Come back. All right. And moving on to section nine of tonight's agenda, we have new business.
Mr. President, I will make a motion to take action on borough personnel early retirement of Mark Albert.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. We appreciate the service from him. Moving on, we have section 10 of tonight's agenda for resolutions and ordinances.
For this ordinance for zoning skill games, we need a motion to recess the meeting into a hearing on skill game, the skill games ordinance.
Still moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, so we are in a hearing. So the Commonwealth Court recently ruled that skill games are not covered by the P A Gaming Control Code, and therefore are permitted, a permitted use in municipalities. As a result, this ordinance attempts to define skill games and attempts to place said permitted use in the zoning district most appropriate, therefore, being the C D Corridor Development District. This ordinance was scheduled and advertised in the Posttown Mercury on February 26, 2024, and March 4th, 2024. Copies of the ordinance were also provided to the Mercury and the Chester County Law Library for public inspection. This ordinance was reviewed by the Chester County Planning Commission, which found that the proposed ordinance is appropriate. This ordinance was also reviewed by the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee, which found that the ordinance was consistent with the Phoenixville Regional Comprehensive Plan. Are there any questions or comments from council on this ordinance?
I did want to understand. So we are modifying with this ordinance, we are modifying the zoning. Because I was looking at section for officer authorization, will we need to take separate resolution or modification to some other part of our code to take whatever actions are necessary and appropriate to carry out the purpose and intent of this ordinance? For instance, the rules around who is allowed to engage in the games, the 18-year age and the hours of operation. How the enforceability is what I'm trying to understand a little bit.
Sure. So you are correct. This is a zoning ordinance amendment, and currently we define skill games as one of the games of amusement that's covered by an entertainment hall use. The Commonwealth Court decision came out in November of 2023, so it's fairly recent. So what we did is we created a definition of skill games that can be individually dealt with under the zoning. And then in this same zoning ordinance, we make the skill game use a conditional use permitted in the C D Development District. As you know, when we have a conditional use hearing tonight, a conditional use is a permitted use provided that you meet certain specific elements. That we have included specific elements in this zoning ordinance, and those specific elements relate to the hours of operation, and also the minimum age of 18 years old to engage in that use. So that will be in our zoning ordinance, and to any use that gets approved under our zoning ordinance for a skill game use, the enforcement would then come from the zoning department.
Okay, the zoning department. We wouldn't we wouldn't envision police officers stopping in to see whether somebody is 18 or not. We don't, we don't really have that kind of process in our borough.
No, and I mean, the zoning ordinance doesn't provide the police with any additional powers for this use or any other use. That being said, the police still have their standard powers to patrol the borough as necessary.
But that being said, if there was a concern and a zoning officer or a codes officer saw, observed that, that would be the way of that being regulated, correct?
Sure. And if the zoning officer identified that there was an issue and needed support, you know, for whatever reasons under the law, they could enlist the help of the police officers. You know, age is a difficult thing to enforce, to be quite frank. And it's, it's more likely that we would receive a specific complaint to follow up on that under this age provision. It's unlikely that we're going to be going in and carding people.
Question I have. So in a circumstance in which someone under 18 were using one of these devices or machines or games, and they were identified as being under the age of 18 by the appropriate party, part of our zoning, what happens?
So in our zoning ordinance, we already have a provision that relates to violations of the zoning ordinance. And there can be fines, and in addition, because this is a conditional use, you potentially could be violating the decision that was provided to you, granting you this conditional use. So, you know, there's a couple of different avenues, but I think the simplest answer to your question is our zoning ordinance already has a violations and enforcement provision, and then you would fall under that provision.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Because this is a public hearing, it is open to any public comment from the public. Seeing none in person, any online? None? Okay, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing and resume our public meeting.
Still moved?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are back in our public meeting. And I would entertain a motion on this ordinance.
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 27 zoning, the skill games ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Weiss and a second by Mr. Kirchner. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance passes eight zero. So the next ordinance on our list is a subdivision and land development ordinance. And this ordinance, we have some additional procedural things to follow up on that we discovered earlier today. So I would entertain a motion to table the consideration of this ordinance until our May meeting, which is, do you know the date of that?
Right. 14.
May 14th at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
All right. We've three more ordinances considered tonight.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending chapter one, Administration and Government, Part Seven, Pensions, Retirement, and Social Security.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Sternfeld, questions on the motion?
I would just add, this was duly advertised on the Posttown Mercury on March 4th, 2024. Copies of the ordinance were provided to the Mercury and the Chester County Law Library for public inspection.
Thank you. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next up, we have a accepting dedication of right of way. What is council's pleasure on this ordinance adoption?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance, accepting dedication of right of way portion U P I numbers 15-812, 15-991, 15-823, 15-992, 15-992.1, 15-993, and 15-997.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carmenito, second by Ms. Berkeley, questions on this motion? Mr. Suster?
I would also add that this ordinance was duly advertised on the Posttown Mercury on March 4th, 2024, and copies of the ordinance were provided to the Mercury and the Chester County Law Library for public inspection.
Thank you. Any other questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And last but not least, additional right of way dedication on Maori Road. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance, accepting dedication of right of way on 195 and 99 Maori Road.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carmenio, second by Ms. Berkeley, questions on this motion of dedication, accepting dedication, Mr. Denlinger?
This ordinance was also advertised on the Posttown Mercury on March 4th, 2024, and copies were also provided to the Mercury and Law Library for public inspection.
Thank you. Any other questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero.
Okay.
Moving very long, we will move to section 11 of tonight's agenda, which is a public hearing for our continued conditional use application.
I'll make a motion that we recess into a public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Denlinger?
Yes, if you bear with me for one second. The borough has received a conditional use application from Rocket Amusement Incorporated. The application concerns property located at 313 Bridge Street and further identified as Chester County U P I number 15-9-105. The property consists of approximately 4,698 square feet of land and is located in the borough's T C Town Center Zoning District. The applicant seeks to operate a skill game room with Pennsylvania skill machines in the first floor of the existing building on the property as an entertainment hall use, in addition to maintaining the existing apartment residential uses on the upper floors of the existing building as an entertainment hall use pursuant to section 27-301 dot two dot A one of the Phoenixville Borough zoning ordinance as of the date of the application. Tonight's hearing is continued from last month's scheduled and advertised conditional use hearing, which was continued on the record to tonight's Borough Council meeting at the request of the applicant. I've gone over some of the stuff before, but it bears repeating that in terms of procedure for this evening's hearing, the applicant will present its case first. The applicant has the burden of proof, so the applicant will present whatever witnesses, testimony, and evidence it chooses to in an attempt to carry that burden. The board can then ask questions of the applicant's witnesses. Any parties, which I will explain in a minute, will be given a chance to ask questions. However, you do not need to be a party to share your comments and opinions on whether you support or oppose the application, which will be encouraged at the end of the hearing. You don't need to be a party to state your opinion. With regarding, with regard to becoming a party on this matter, party status is entirely optional. There are certain qualifications to party status, and it is necessary that you be what the M P C, the Municipality's Planning Code, calls an affected or aggrieved party. That is someone who could actually be impacted positively or negatively by the application and the proposed use beyond those effects experienced by the general public. If you wish to become a party, you would be subject to cross-examination from the applicant as to whether or not you live or are located close enough to be really impacted by the application and how this use affects you. In addition to being allowed to question witnesses and present your own evidence, a party is also entitled to receive a copy of this board's decision and take an appeal of that decision to the Court of Common Pleas, should they wish to do so. First, is the applicant here this evening?
We are.
Could you please state your names for the record?
I'm John Mizik. I am a managing partner for Rocket Amusement.
Matt Tongianni, also a partner in this business. I also own Toshka and Tile and Marble, which is, I don't know if you think so. T O N G I A N.
And I'm aware that Mr. Jefferson is here requesting party status on the behalf of his client. Is that correct?
That is correct, on behalf of the Phoenixville Borough Planning Commission.
Does the applicant ask to ask questions of Mr. Jefferson in relation to his request for party status?
Solicitor diligent, first excuse to mask. I was sick. I didn't want to get anyone else sick. So I don't know what good it'll do, but this is our first hearing. We've never had any type of hearing for applications to be able to operate within a borough or city. So we're kind of blindsided. We had counsel on the issue, and roughly six days ago, 10 days ago, our counsel decided to dump us and go on our way. So we're left without counsel. We don't want to prolong it any longer. So we basically prepare a reading for you that covers everything that we wanted to discuss. I don't know if that's appropriate or not.
Okay, well, first, we're just seeing if anyone here, and we're starting with Mr. Jefferson, will receive party status, and you have the right to question anyone who requests party status to see if they are a person or entity affected by your application.
No, we're not, we're not gonna. We don't need to question anyone or anything. We're
Okay. So we'll come back to you. Am I understanding you correctly that you want to move forward with the hearing this evening?
We do.
Okay. With that, the Planning Commission and Mr. Jefferson as counsel are granted party status. Is there anyone else here in the room tonight that wishes to have party status? Let the record reflect that there is no one requesting party status in the room. Is there anyone requesting party status on Zoom? Then raise your hand if you are. Let the record reflect that. Let the record reflect that no hands were raised on Zoom. Alright, so uh before I turn it over to the applicant, uh I am going to uh mark the borough's exhibits. Exhibit B one will be the conditional use application submitted by Rocket Amusement Incorporated with a conditional use permit addendum dated November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, completed and accepted on January fourth, twenty twenty-four. Exhibit B two is an executed commercial lease between Rocket Amusement L L C and Charles J. Falcone Incorporated dated November one, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit B three is a continuance request letter from Maureen Austin Esquire dated February twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Exhibit B four is an email exchange between Scott Denlinger, myself, Maureen Austin, and Robert Jefferson dated February twelfth and February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit B five is an action memo from the Borough of Phoenixville Planning Commission dated January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Exhibit B six is a true and correct copy of section twenty-seven dash three zero one dot two dot A one of the Phoenixville Borough zoning ordinance as of the date of the submission of the application. Exhibit B seven is public notice for this conditional use hearing on the aforementioned application. Exhibit B eight is the proof of publication of notice from the Pottstown Mercury verifying that February's hearing was advertised on January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, and February fifth, twenty twenty-four. Exhibit B nine is an affidavit of posting of public notice at the property on or before January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. And exhibit B ten is an affidavit of mailing of public notice on or before January twenty-sixth and a list of properties and persons that were mailed notice of February's hearing by first-class mail. So, Mr. Mizik, with that, um I will turn the hearing over to you to present testimony, evidence, and witnesses um a- as you choose. Uh, if you have a statement, you may read it. Uh, if you have uh evidence to submit, um I would suggest that it'd be good to have multiple copies um so that all the parties can see what you're talking about.
We do.
Um, so uh with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Alright, thank you. This is a.
And. Yep.
Yeah.
And if you can just use the microphone to the best, just that way the Zoom can hear you.
Uh, the best way that we thought to present this would be through like a memorandum-type document. Uh, it covers everything that we wanted to present to the council. So I have copies for each member.
Yeah, we give them.
Sure. Um. I'll ma- mark this exhibit A one. Um, and you can hand them out. I would make sure that you uh give a copy to uh the Planning Commission. Um, so I'd maybe start there to make sure that uh you don't run out.
We may be one short within.
That's okay.
Then I'd just like to read it and go from there.
That sounds appropriate.
Okay. Okay. Well, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is John Mizik. I'm the managing partner of Rocket Amusement, a sister company of Veterans Standing, registered in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in good standing as a domestic nonprofit corporation. Excuse me. I'm a husband of thirty-seven years, a father to three successful children, and a grandfather to eight children. I'm also a veteran who served in the United States Army from March of nineteen seventy-three until February of nineteen seventy-seven. I've worked in the skill game industry operating legal skill games throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania going on six years now. Within this period, our priority function is to raise monies to assist United States Armed Forces veterans by providing free of charge transportation to their hospital, doctor, and dental appointment. Excuse me. My partners are Matthew Tonjiani, a Phoenixville businessman who owns and operates Toscano Tile and Marble Company, based in Phoenixville. Matthew's family has lived in Phoenixville area their entire life, they're upstanding citizens, and active in the Phoenixville community. Matthew is a dedicated husband and father of two daughters. He is active in the Commonwealth, supporting local veteran organizations. Yeah, for me, Dave, man. I have uh grips in my hands, so kind of hard to turn pages. Laurie Livingston is also a partner who is a dedicated mother of two teenage daughters. Miss Livingston is also active in the community, community, as a well-known real estate agent who serves the eastern Pennsylvania region of Pennsylvania. Miss Livingston has an excellent reputation and is known to be effective in her profession, honest, and active assisting United States Armed Forces veterans. Skill game business. At present, the skill games are considered to be legal within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. They are unfortunately unregulated and have no governing body to provide structure for their operation. They're about, they are in about every gas station, mini mart, bar, tavern, restaurant, pizza shop, smoke shop, and laundry in the Commonwealth. Our organization has been instrumental in attempting to establish guidelines for the operation of skill games. See our exhibit E X eight, which is an ordinance that we've submitted for approval to both Pottstown and Reading. Conditional use.
Mr. Mizik, can I?
Yes.
Um, stop you and ask you where exhibit E X eight is located?
Should be attached right after page five.
Okay, understood.
So right after the mercury, I'm sorry, there was a a write-up concerning this amendment in the mercury.
So it's a part of this exhibit A one?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. As we explained in the document titled Conditional Use Permit, submitted to the borough along with our application for conditional use, we originally misread the Phoenixville zoning guidelines. We misread theater and entertainment center to be entertainment hall. We believed in the beginning that our location at three thirteen Bridge Street was by use, was a use by right. We apologize for our misunderstanding. We do not understand the value. We uh do understand the valuable time and resources that have been caused for our misunderstanding and apologize. We would encourage the council to consider approval of our application and present the following in support of our request. We have taken into consideration the following issues before determining whether the the location at three thirteen Bridge Street would be best suited for our game room in Phoenixville. One, as proven by our previous experience in operating skill games, the noise level, it would not, the noise level would not disrupt any of the tenants in the building. The noise level is kept to a minimum, has no loud music, and does not permit, and we do not permit any yelling that would disrupt the person sitting next to them, let alone someone in another space. Two, our minimum use of water will not place a hardship on the burr- on the borough. Three, as our business depends more on walking customers than driving, it would not produce any hardship on the borough for parking. If granted, the conditional use we will put in place specifically regulates right uh places specific regulations that would benefit the borough. A, we will not permit the use of any alcohol in our establishment. B, we will not permit any person under the age of eighteen to play our skill games and will require identification to support the scene. Three, we will not permit any loud noise to come from our skill game room. D, we will decorate the windows and entry points so that the inside of the skill game room is not visible to the public walking past. And E, we will set a reasonable time to open and close. At present, we expect to open at ten A M. and close at two A M. along with the taverns and bars. Conclusion. At present, it would appear the Commonwealth is going through a number of difficulties with designating regulations for the skill, for the operation of skill games in the community. There basically has been not one single action taken to provide guidance on how skill games should be operated. The court ruling rulings are difficult for a layperson to understand and have not been widely published within the communities throughout the Commonwealth. Skill games have been compared with casino slot machine gambling devices, when in fact the courts have ruled that the gaming provisions that oversee gambling in the Commonwealth do not apply to skill games. Provisions that oversee gambling in the Commonwealth do not apply to skill games. So it is left up to the community to take steps and provide some form of skill game structure that prevents it from adversely harming the community. Our organization does not only satisfy satisfy this need, but helps support our veterans in doing so. We have skill games located at sixteen forty-six West High Street, Stowe, Pennsylvania, one oh five North Main Street, Spring City, Pennsylvania, forty-eight South Reading Avenue, Boyertown, Pennsylvania, two twenty Claremont Avenue, Tamaka, Pennsylvania, three fifty-two Penn Street, Reading, Pennsylvania, three thirty forty-five Kensington Avenue, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and twenty-two twelve North Front Street, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. We have been in operation as of two thousand and twenty-one. To date, we have not had one incident of violence. We respectfully request our conditional use be granted. Thank you. If you have any questions at all, uh, I'm not an expert on skill games, but I've been in and around the litigation of them from the beginning and basically know just about everything that's going on with them.
So, Mr. Mizik, am I correct that in presenting yourself as a witness, uh, you have nothing further to say and you're ready to answer questions?
I am.
Um, with that, I turn it over to Mr. Jefferson if he has any questions for you.
Yes, sir, and and thank you. Um, just by way of uh procedural, there's no objection from the Phoenixville Borough Planning Commission in regards to the admission of Mizik one. So there's no objection to the admission of that exhibit. Um, Mr. Mizik, uh Rocket Amusement L L C is the tenant of three one three Bridge Street. Is that correct?
It is.
Approximately, when did Rocket Amusement enter that lease?
I believe it was uh October, November first.
Okay, and you said that you're one of the principals of Rocket Amusement, is that correct?
I am.
And as one of the principals, are you an authorized representative to seek the conditional use here this evening?
I am.
Okay, uh, in earlier testimony, you stated that uh Rocket Amusement has a purpose, and that's to support veterans. Is that correct?
It is.
And uh, does Rocket Amusement support veterans reaching out?
No, it's a separate organization.
Okay, is, are you in any way related to veterans reaching out?
No, we're not.
Okay.
We were, not to mislead you, we were at one time, but they were taking actions that we didn't agree with. So we actually pulled out.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, at the time that uh you submitted the application, um, did you reference veterans reaching out?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Did veterans reaching out solicit funds uh in regards to helping the veterans uh get to their meetings and things that you identified already?
That I can't answer, not being a part of their organization any longer.
Okay, how long were you a part of their organization?
Roughly seven months.
And at that time, uh, were they soliciting funds?
Yes, they were.
Okay, and what role or part of that organization did you hold?
I was uh I guess the manager, operator, uh, chief executive officer.
You were the C E O of Veterans Reaching Out?
In the beginning, yes.
And you were there for seven months?
Yes.
What seven-month period were you there for?
Oh, first seven months, I guess it would be from two thousand twenty-one roughly around April till right into November.
Okay.
And I I know where you're going. Okay. I wasn't a part of the stop and desist order. It was directed to me, but I wasn't part of the organization at the time.
So is this uh proposed entertainment hall use um going to supply funds for veterans reaching out?
Absolutely. We already provided throughout uh forum. We have a list of veterans that we've helped, and we've already provided with money out of our pocket.
Okay, I'd like to shift uh our focus to the details of your proposed use. Um, I heard you mention skilled games, but can you sort of describe what the proposed skill games are going to be?
There'll be vanilla's, which were approved in the courts, I believe, several months ago, and uh skill games uh manufactured by Pisa Matic.
If I had no idea what a skill game was, could you describe it? Is it like a slot machine? Is it more like a a poker machine or electronic machine? What could you best equate it to?
I can give you a a real clear example. A slot machine, when you go into a casino, you place your money in, you hit the button, and it says whether you win or lose. A skill game, you must interact with the game in some way, shape, or form, usually by moving from one uh position to another position to make like a tic tic-tac-toe uh line. So, yes, there is a difference.
Okay.
Is it a difficult one? No.
Okay, um. You've already sort of mentioned the hours of the proposed use of your operation, and I believe it was from ten A M. to two A M. Is that every single day of the week?
No, we close on Sundays.
Okay, are there going to be different hours for Friday and Saturday?
Uh, we basically will open uh till midnight from uh Monday through Thursday, and then two A M. from Friday till Sunday.
Okay. Who will be managing the day-to-day sort of operation of um this entertainment hall use?
One of the man- one of the partners.
And that includes you?
Yes, does.
Will food or um will food be served on the premises?
No, it won't. No, it won't.
Uh, if the board were so inclined to grant your conditional use application, would you accept that as a condition? Of approval that you not have food service on the premises?
Absolutely.
Okay, uh in your um narrative that you read. You spoke about um alcohol being served and you said that there will be no alcohol served on the premises, is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, if the board were so inclined to uh grant your conditional use application. Would you accept as a condition of approval that no alcohol be served on the premises?
Yes.
Okay, um. How many employees do you plan to have on the premises at any one given time?
One.
Okay, and what are your plans for parking for the employees?
Uh, build park wherever.
We actually with our lease.
Excuse me, uh. This is a single witness right now, um if you'd like to present uh yourself as a witness uh next.
Okay, we have one designated space.
Hold on.
Okay.
If you would like to present yourself as a witness next, you may, but you may not talk to each other.
Oh.
While Mister Muzik is testifying, this is his testimony, this is his own knowledge.
Okay, to my knowledge, it'll be whatever space that's offered by Phoenixville. Uh, if it's paid space, we'll pay for it.
Okay, uh going back to the sort of alcohol being served, um I know that there's certain. What I'll call BYOB establishments, bring your own bottle.
There is.
Do you intend to be a BYOB establishment?
No, no, we don't want any kind of problems from alcohol.
Okay, and then sort of the same line of questioning. If granted, if the board granted this conditional use, would you accept as a condition of approval? That you not operate as a BYOB, bring your own bottle?
Yes.
Okay. How many numbers of security personnel do you plan to have present at any given time?
Each person that works there is gonna be uh. I have a brother who's military police for thirty years, uh served in shape. As uh on the honor guard for NATO. Uh, he's gonna give some classes just basically on general uh. Security, but we have a security system that has uh twenty-four hour monitoring. There's a person on the other end that watches the cameras. You know, not continuously, but the cameras will switch in and out. Excuse me, as well, they have a body alarm. That if there is any kind of problems or if someone starts getting loud or out of line. All they have to do is hit the button and it's a silent alarm that will contact one of the the partners of. Of Rocket Amusement. It's through simply safe. Uh burglary alarm company, it also have burglar alarms. Set up in all the windows and doors for the times that we're not there.
Okay, what is your plan for parking of patrons?
Our plan for them is, I mean, they find their own parking. Uh, if it's something that has to be paid for, we'll take it out of our our monies. In order to help assist with the parking.
You already mentioned earlier that uh you plan to uh pre cover the windows. Um, so that nobody can see inside in regard to um. Uh, the proposed entertainment hall use, um is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, do you intend to have any other signage?
In the windows, yes. We presently do that at Boyertown and the space behind us, there is a tumbling uh business for children. So our windows face outward towards that. And we don't allow anyone to come in that entrance and we also have the windows blocked off.
Uh, Phoenixville Borough has a sign ordinance.
Okay.
Um, would you agree as a condition of approval that whatever signage you propose to install? That it will comply with the Phoenixville Borough's sign ordinance?
Absolutely.
If the machines uh are sort of operated by inserting cash, will there be a cash transportation company utilized?
We don't make that much. I mean, there's not that much cash being moved that we have to call brings.
Okay, um have you obtained the necessary insurances for the proposed use?
We have.
Okay. In your conditional use application, you submitted the application, an interior plot plan, a narrative. An unsigned and a signed lease, did you submit anything else to Phoenixville Borough?
No, I don't believe we did.
Okay, so I'm gonna run through a few things really quickly. Did you or Rocket Amusement provide evidence with supporting documentation? That the capacity of the road system providing access to three one three Bridge Street. Has sufficient capacity to accommodate the entertainment hall use?
Uh, the capacity that's set up for the building itself, the space itself, we won't exceed.
Have you provided any sort of any supporting documentation to anybody at the borough in regards to the capacity for the roadways?
Uh, you know, I I don't know what that is. I mean, I don't understand what you're, we we believe that the the building was uh. So many persons were permitted in the building prior to that. Uh, because of the fire company and I think that number is in the seventies. And we agreed that we would not uh. It wouldn't be even close to that number coming into our building.
Okay, but that's not necessarily my question.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just don't understand.
I know, um and it's it's a little different, but. Have you or an engineer or a traffic engineer studied the capacity of the roadway system providing access to Bridge Street? At your location, thank you. Uh, did you or Rocket Amusement provide evidence with supporting documentation? That the interior traffic circulation for the entertainment hall use at three one three Bridge Street is adequate. To provide safe and convenient circulations for users of the facility?
Have we done a study or?
Correct, have you done any studies or provided any?
Uh, other than sit and watch the the lights, I mean, no, I mean. I wouldn't even know how to do that.
Did you employ any sort of traffic engineer to do that?
No.
Okay. Did you or Rocket Amusement provide evidence with supporting documentation? That the facility provides safe and convenient pedestrian access and internal circulation within the grounds? Of three one three Bridge Street?
No, we didn't, we didn't hire anyone to do anything like that.
Okay. Uh, did you or Rocket Amusement provide evidence with supporting documentation? That the local fire department has the ability to provide adequate fire protection? And emergency management services for the proposed entertainment hall?
No.
Did you or Rocket Amusement provide evidence with supporting documentation? That the existing or proposed sanitary sewer sewage. Disposal facilities have sufficient capacity for the proposed entertainment hall?
Yes, we did do that.
When did you submit that document to?
Submit anything, but we did, we looked at how many people would be coming in the bill and building and. It wouldn't be any more than what was coming in before.
Is it fair to say that you didn't have any sort of expert uh in regards to sanitary sewer?
Yes, we didn't hire any anyone to do any studies or anything. We were bewildered enough trying to get the documents together. You know, to file on just for the conditional use.
Understood, did you or Rocket Amusement provide evidence with supporting documentation? Documentation that the existing or proposed municipal water supply? Facilities have sufficient capacity for the proposed entertainment hall?
No.
Mister Muzik, I'm I'm reaching the end of my uh sort of cross-examination and I'll be turning it over. Um, and I and I want to do this as delicately as I can so that I'm. As delicate as I can be, but one of the roles of the governing body this evening is to make credibility determinations. As they serve as the fact finder.
Okay.
Um, Mister Muzik, have you ever been convicted of bank fraud or check fraud?
Yes.
How many counts do you recall?
Numerous counts.
Are you still under supervision for that uh those convictions?
No, I've been off of supervision for over fifteen years. I've not been questioned nor arrested since.
I have no further questions, we do have one witness, but I have no further questions for this particular witness.
Thank you, Mister Jefferson, um Borough Council now has opportunity to ask Mister Muzik questions, um and Mister Muzik. Uh, and Rocket Amusement also have after council uh has questions, opportunity to present another witness if if you like. Um, so first, does council have any questions for Mister Muzik?
Good evening, Mister Muzik. So, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, have you been a managing partner of Rocket Rocket Amusement for six years?
No, Rocket Amusement was just formed uh last year.
And you've been involved in uh skill games for six years?
I have been.
Okay, can you explain how?
Uh, through purchasing skill games, uh supplying skill games, different locations for play.
Okay, now you currently Rocket Management or Rocket Amusement has what, seven locations?
It does.
Okay, are they all run roughly the same?
They are.
Okay, and I want to just kind of circle back to what you said, um how many employees are you gonna have?
One per shift.
One per shift?
Yes.
Okay, how are you going to monitor if somebody's eighteen or not?
We ask for identification if they look young enough.
Do you monitor everybody who comes in?
Basically, yes.
Okay, and that one employee is responsible for that?
That one employee is.
Okay, you don't have any security on site?
We don't need any.
Okay, and I want to take a piece of what you said, you said, we don't make that much, is that correct?
That's true.
Okay, can you pick one of your locations, tell me what they make?
Uh, last month, Boyertown, Boyertown made roughly throughout the month thirty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, was that all in cash?
It was, that's the growth.
Do you have safes, anything on site to keep the cash safe?
We do.
And you don't use a cash transport?
No, we have a machine where when you put the money in the skill game. And it's a steel machine like an ATM. And you hit the button, the slip comes out and you go to the machine, we don't even carry the cash, we don't hold cash. In our hands on any shift.
Understand, yeah, now you've also said you haven't had any incidents of violence, is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, now I do a couple last questions, your main focus, it seems, is providing money. To veterans, is that correct?
It is.
Okay, how do you do that?
Uh, we placed uh notes on the hospital. Down in Philadelphia on their board, anyone seeking a ride, it started out in two thousand and eighteen, my brother and I went to the hospital. Uh, Philadelphia and some of the old timers, their biggest complaint was that they couldn't get to their appointments. So we ended up placing some uh little post-it notes. If they needed a ride from this area, that we'd be more than happy to bring them. Well, it got to the point to where we couldn't afford to do it anymore, so we started looking for ways to make money.
And do you have like a fleet of vehicles now?
No, we use our own personal vehicles.
Okay, how much of the money that you make would you say goes to help veterans?
Roughly twenty to thirty percent.
Okay.
And that's twenty to thirty percent more than anyone else.
Understand, I appreciate it and your service, thank you, I have no further questions.
Anyone else?
So, just to clarify, I was a little confused, at one point, there was a question about whether you would contribute to. The organization um that you had mentioned before that you were no longer affiliated with.
Reaching out.
So you would be um contributing to their funds, okay, I was confused by that. And then Veteran Standing is a sister company of?
Yeah, Veteran Standing is our, is the nonprofit. And all of our like Rocket Amusements, we have them as doing business as Rocket Amusement.
So, um. You, all of your locations that you described in this. Some portion of the income derived from the games.
Absolutely.
Is used to fund. Providing rides for veterans to healthcare.
Yes.
Appointments.
Yes.
Do you? How would we know that? How, do you, do you, you publish reports or how do we, how do we understand? If you're asking us to approve this?
I can give you a list of them. I mean, that's the best I can do. I mean, we, we, I don't even take a salary. From any of the monies that are produced. So. We, we do uh. We, we have a list that comes in every week from the phone calls. And we contact the person when their appointment is and we get someone to go. We have a lot of volunteers, we probably have twenty to thirty volunteers. And what what this money pays for is their gas and they get ten dollars an hour for driving.
Is that done through Veteran Standing? Is it done through a separate organism?
Veteran Standing, the nonprofit.
Okay.
That allows us also to raise money through the nonprofit.
Mister Muzik, I I have questions and since you can't see my name. Um, my name's Rich Kirchner, I'm the North Ward Council person. Um, and I, I I'm I'm trying to get a. A handle on, uh well, first off, let me ask you. You said you you've had no incidents of violence at your other.
No.
Locations, have there any been, have have there been any incidents of other types of crime?
No crimes, you know, there have been people who are allowed that we, very loud that we've had to ask to leave.
Okay.
Uh, people who didn't agree with, you know, the way things were run, I don't know. You ever been in a business where not everybody appreciates what you're doing and, I mean, it's skill games, there's money involved.
Okay, so, and in the in the application, it says if someone gets loud. Uh, you turn the noise level down to zero, how was, how was that done?
We have a. We have the uh, it's a, a machine, each place has a machine that plays music.
Mm-hmm.
We turn it down till it's, everything's resolved. Cause the mood, we feel that the music beating and beating and beating is just gonna, you know, cause more problems, it just increases. You know, it increases, you know, not a person getting angry, but it's like the music's beating and it's just our own personal way.
What is that, like background music?
Yeah, it's music that's played from uh the internet.
Okay. Okay, um. And I I I don't know if there's a way to do this in a conditional use, but. Uh, would would you object to having any kind of um? Noise level ceiling?
No, we don't object to any.
Sound system?
We're not here to object, we're just. We're here trying to get it pushed through and whatever you want us to do, we're basically willing to do it.
Okay.
I mean, this isn't to benefit us.
Right, and and if you would, if you could help me a little bit, I I'm. I I'm I'm a little confused on how the Veteran Standing is the organization that provides the.
It's a nonprofit.
It's a, it's a five oh one C three?
It is.
Okay, and so. And so twenty to thirty percent of what Rocket Amusement generates.
At the end of the month.
Goes to Veteran Standing.
Yes.
Okay. And do, do you have any involvement with Veteran Standing?
I do.
Okay. And what is that? And forgive me if you've already explained that, but.
No, I'm basically the chief executive officer.
Okay.
Uh, I had a, a nonprofit, my brother and I started when we started this out in two thousand and eighteen. And we got involved with some people that weren't looking to do the right thing. So, uh, we came up with a, a way to make sure that it does get done right.
Okay.
And that's by having our hands on everything that happens.
Now, do you, do you draw any salary from Veteran Standing or, okay? Um, and you say you, you don't draw any salary from Rocket Amusement?
No.
Okay. Do you derive a profit from that?
No.
So, so, so you, you get nothing?
I have no monies coming out of this at all.
Okay. Okay, um, could you, could you restate what, what hours?
Uh, Monday through Thursday, it would be, uh, ten in the morning till midnight. And then over the weekend till two AM.
Okay, and then Sunday?
We're, we're closed Sunday.
Closed Sundays? Okay.
Not all of our, our places are closed.
Right.
But.
But this place would, we're, we're only interested in this place.
Yeah, we're, we're not gonna open on Sunday.
Okay. All right, and as far as you, you say there will be no alcohol like there ever did. There, there will be no food.
There will not be.
Will, will there be like a soda machine or something or?
We give out water.
Okay.
That's it.
You, okay.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, because I, I was thinking.
It's the way it is.
Someone's in there. You know, I mean, I, I, I've been in here for about two hours. I get a little dry, you know?
We give out bottles of water.
Okay.
I mean, I could take everyone to two or three of the places right now. You can see everything that I've told you is the truth.
Okay.
I mean, just walk into the place, you'll see the water sitting there. You'll see, uh, the alarm system. I mean. Everything that we're doing here today is, is trying to satisfy you. To give you whatever you need or whatever you want from us to open.
And, uh, another question, there will be restroom facilities for patrons?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, and staffing again, it's
One.
One person per, per shift?
Per shift.
That person needs to run out for something, the business closes, correct?
Business closes. There's no, it's never left there, you know, without someone occupying it.
Okay. And I, that pretty well gets through the questions that I had. So thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on council?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, are all your locations open till two AM on the weekends?
No.
So, um, would you consider, uh, limiting the hours on the weekends in the Phoenixville location?
That's what you require, absolutely.
Anyone else on council? Uh, Mr. Music, I have a couple of questions to just follow up on Mr. Carmenito's question, uh. If council was looking for shorter weekend hours, wha-, uh, what would you propose would be a reasonable closing, closing time that you would agree to?
Average or ordinance, twelve o'clock would be fine.
Okay. So I, I really am seeking a little bit of clarity on things I just didn't fully understand. So. You mentioned that you have a metal machine that holds the money.
It's all the TRT.
Okay, can you describe to me what it looks like, how it works?
It's about four feet tall. Excuse me, maybe a foot and a half wide and another foot and a half deep. It's steel. I think it's rolled steel. Uh, it's purchased, we purchase them. They're twelve thousand dollars a piece. And it's bolted to the floor. And when you put your money into the machine and you get your money out of the machine, it produces a little slip with a barcode on it. You take that slip over to the, uh, TRT. You place it under a scanner and it gives you your money.
So if I'm playing a skill game, do I put my money directly in the skill game and then it gives me a ticket?
Yes.
Okay.
That's taken out once a week.
Okay. And can you describe the structure or security measures for the skill games where the money's going in?
The boxes, the majority of them are made of steel. Uh, especially the Pasematics. There, you can't get in it with. With, I don't know, with what, if anything, I mean. If you have one of those sols and stuff, you couldn't get in it with that.
Okay. So you mentioned that I think it was your Boyer Town location, uh, made about thirty-two thousand dollars last month.
I believe that. I don't deal with the money.
Okay.
So I, I'm guessing, but it's pretty educated guess. It's probably about thirty to thirty-two thousand dollars.
And what percent of, I, I'm assuming that's gross. What percentage of that, uh, goes to costs?
Well, we pay thirty-five percent for the machines. Okay, so probably. We probably net maybe with salaries and rent and eight to ten thousand dollars, maybe not even that much per month. It's not a lot of money. Everyone thinks that those games, uh, produce a lot of money and in some instances they do. Some locations, I know of a location in Philadelphia that every month it pays, uh, a net profit of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars with six machines. But we don't have those locations.
Okay, so then your net profit at that point, a hundred percent of it is going to veterans that standing?
Rent, the twenty percent, twenty to thirty percent to Veteran Standing. Then we have rent. We have electric, we have internet, we have security, we have, uh, salaries. And when it's all said and done. I mean, there's the money left, but it's not a whole lot.
So is it the amount of money that goes to Veteran Standing? Is it twenty percent to thirty percent of the gross or the net?
No, it's the net.
Okay.
Uh, if we did the gross, we, we wouldn't be working.
Okay.
And some, some places make more. Uh, like I said, I don't have any dealings with the money. Uh, I basically look for the, the locations and set them up. And then we have someone else who uh, goes to the machines and clears the money out of them. And then accumulates that money from the TRT and does all the bookwork.
Okay. I'm gonna change gears a bit. You, you mentioned, and, and you can see I'm getting to some of the security issues, um. Or concerns, uh. You mentioned that your employees were body alarms in case something happens, is that correct? Okay. How many times per month have those body alarms been activated across all of your locations?
Oh. I have to excuse me, I'm sorry, but we, we just put the alarm system in Philadelphia and for two days it was nonstop. But that was only because they didn't know how to, to do the alarm system. So for an actual call? Never. They've never been activated for the police to come.
Well, I, I'm asking because I'm asking how often it's activated when the police don't come. But there's an issue you're able to resolve internally.
Never.
Okay.
There's a, a, the company has, uh, a center that actually monitors our cameras. Now, I don't know how much they monitor them. They, they say that they see them every like thirty seconds or so because it goes through a streaming of a person watching. And if they see anything that doesn't look right. They'll call. And, uh, to verify that everything's okay. But, uh, that when we, when someone hits the button, that goes directly to simply safe. And then they'll call and determine whether or not they should call the police or not. And it's never happened.
Okay. You made a statement earlier that, uh, skill games are in about every gas station, mini mart, bar, tavern, restaurant, pizza shop, smoke shop and laundry in the Commonwealth. Um, I was wondering if you could share the evidentiary support that you use to make that statement?
Well, I've been in just about every one of them. Uh, I personally know other operators who have skill games in locations like that. And i- if you go out and just like in certain areas. Uh, Pottstown is one of the largest areas. We did a study for Pottstown. They have roughly in the, within the borough limits, they have close to four hundred skill games. So you look at Pottstown and then think four hundred skill games. On High Street, Little Italy has skill games. Uh, all the gas stations have skill games. And this was one of the reasons why we proposed the, the ordinance. One, one, uh, Sunoco Station has twenty-one games. And that's more than we have in any one of our skill gamer. Uh, Reading just imposed a new ordinance. Where you're permitted one skill game per four hundred feet of space. And it has to be active space. It can't be the bathroom, can't be behind the counter. So they're starting to cut down on, on the use of the skill games there as well. Because even the laundromats in Reading have skill games. And we know that because we have skill games in the laundromat.
So, so this is anecdotal evidence?
I beg your pardon?
So your evidentiary, your evidentiary sta-, uh, support is anecdotal?
Yes.
Now. Going to the, the floor plan that you provided with your application. Am I correct that you're proposing twelve skill game?
Twelve to sixteen. I don't know how many, uh, games were set out in the drawing.
Well.
Is it twelve?
I believe it's twelve, if I'm reading this correctly. Um, there are twelve Xs and there appears to be a legend that says skill game machines X.
That's what it is then, twelve.
And then there are four smaller Xs that are labeled chairs. So those do not appear to be skill games.
Well, i- if that's what it is, that's what we'll have, twelve.
Okay. With that, I have no further questions, um. And Mr. Music, do you have, uh, anyone else you'd like to present as a witness? Uh, sure, but you have to raise your right hand and be sworn in first.
Can you just slide the microphone over?
Yeah.
Going back to your question about parking for employees in our lease, we do have one designated spot in, in, in the rear of the building for our space. And then to. He was asking if we did any studies on water usage and moveability in, in the building. Uh, we didn't think we had to do any of that because we saw that this building was already pre-approved for a restaurant use. So we're definitely gonna use less order than what a restaurant would use. And we're gonna have less people in there at one time than, than a restaurant would. So. I, we didn't think we had to do any of those kind of studies for, for, for this particular, but, uh, space. That's it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Jefferson, any cross-examination?
Very shortly, and sir, could you just say your name one more time for me?
Yes, Matt, Matthew Tanjiani.
Okay, and sir, um, you're one of the principals of Rocket Amusement as well?
Yes.
Okay, and what role in a sort of day-to-day function will you hold, uh, with the proposed entertainment hall use?
Uh, just up, upper management, overseeing employees, uh, you know, scheduling, um, scheduling, uh, money pickups, uh, help with bookkeeping and accounting.
Will you be, uh, on site most of the days, some of the days, none of the days?
No, I typically stop in a location once a week.
Okay. I have nothing further for this witness.
Any questions from council?
Do you take a salary from Rocket Amusement?
Uh, no, I, I mean, uh, there's profit sharing at the end of the, at the end of each quarter.
Okay, and is that for every managing partner?
Me and Lori, John.
Okay.
Anyone else? Um, I just have one question. You mentioned that you use less water than a restaurant use. Uh, did you have an expert tell you that or is that just anecdotal?
That anecdote, I mean.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing further. Um, so, uh, Mr. Music, do you have any other witnesses or testimony that you'd like to present?
No. Uh, just like to thank council for at least Karen.
Okay, um. Uh, with that, I, uh, turn the case over to Mr. Jefferson to see if he would like to present any evidence, testimony or witnesses.
Yes, the planning commission does intend to call Mr. Bulker to, uh, this, or to testify. Um, we do have packets prepared for all council and, uh, we have a few hopefully left over. I just don't know, do we need to take a? Karen, are you okay right now? Okay, sorry. Okay, then if, if I may, I'll, I'll hand out the packets first, um. Mr. Bulker, I may employ you to help me.
Sure.
Does council might have Mr. Bulker sits next to me? Instead of going in that middle seat?
That's fine.
Thank you. Mr. Bulker, could you please state your name, spelling both your first and your last name?
Sure, David Bulker, D A V I D B O E L K E R.
And Mr. Bulker, where are you employed?
I'm sorry, just if it happened, I missed it. Was Mr. Bulker sworn in? Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm employed by the Borough of Phoenixville.
Uh, and how long have you been employee, employed by the Borough?
It's approaching fifteen years in a couple of months.
And what specific position do you hold with the Borough?
I'm the planning director and zoning officer.
And, uh, most people here already know who you are, but just for purposes of the record, could you briefly describe your duties and responsibilities in that position?
Sure, um, the zoning officer has a primary responsibility for the maintenance interpretation, uh, and enforcement. maintenance interpretation uh, and enforcement of the entirety of the zoning and uh, ordinance and all the regulations within it. Um, as a planning director, I essentially assist the planning commission in land development projects that come forward. And um, my department is also in charge of all building permits, um, occupancy permits, basically, um, and rental inspections as well.
Thank you. Um, I've provided a packet of exhibits to both you, the uh, applicant and um, everybody at council here. Um, do you have one in front of you as well?
Yes.
Let's uh, sort of work through this packet together if we can, and hopefully we'll explain why we brought some of these exhibits and, and their purpose. Um, I have what's been previously marked as PC, meaning Planning Commission One. Do you recognize what Planning Commission One is?
Yes, this is a blank conditional use application that we have on the website and available.
Okay, and is it a fair and accurate copy of the conditional use application?
Yes.
Uh, on the first page of the conditional use application and sort of looking at the bottom right-hand corner, does it list the considerations when considering a conditional use application?
Yes.
And there's a number one underneath that, but then does it go on to page two?
Yes.
Okay, and then sorry, are these conditions and considerations essentially the same thing that are contained in section twenty-seven dash nine oh five point five of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. So our purpose in providing the um, the blank application is that the conditional use standards are already listed in the application that's available online. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Moving on to what's been previously marked as PC two, do you recognize PC two?
Yes.
And what is PC two?
Uh, PC two is the uh, is all the requirements for conditional use hearings.
Okay. And uh, looking at section subsection five, which is at the bottom of page one, does that say what Borough Council shall consider um, in a conditional use application?
Yes.
And then does it go on to list uh, A through L?
Yes.
And do these um, standards essentially mirror the standards that were listed in the blank application?
Yes.
Okay. So even if somebody didn't know about E-code or finding it online, the conditional use standards are in the blank online application that are readily available to everyone?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, as part of your duties and responsibilities, do you review conditional use applications for administrative completeness?
Yes.
And can you just briefly describe what it means for an application to be administratively complete?
Well, essentially that uh, as much of the information that uh, we ask for, contact information, property information, um, required submissions, uh, uh, inability to make said application um, has been reasonably represented.
Okay. Uh, we're focusing more on tonight's hearing. Did you receive a conditional use application for three one three Bridge Street, Phoenixville?
Yes.
I have what has been previously marked as exhibit P, PC three. Do you recognize this larger uh, exhibit?
Yes.
And uh, what is it?
Uh, this is a conditional use application for Rocket Amusement at three one three.
And is this at least the application that you received? Uh, and is it signed by Mr. Mizzick?
Yes.
Okay, and does it fairly and accurately depict the application that you received from the applicant?
Yes.
And it also contains several exhibits with a plot plan and a narrative, and at least an unsigned and a signed lease eventually, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I'd like to flip to page two of the narrative that's in exhibit PC three. And I'd sort of like to focus on the top paragraph. And uh, I'm gonna read it out loud, and if I'm reading it correctly, just let me know. Does it uh, read, "Our organization started in twenty eighteen by forming Veterans Reaching Out, Inc.?" "Since that time, we have re- branched off several times due to location and the number of, number of active members, parenthetical, Veterans Reaching Out LLC, Veterans Standing Together, and now Rocket Amusement." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson, can I interrupt? Just, uh, members of the audience, uh, we need to be hearing every word that's being said. Our stenographer needs to hear every word that's being said. We cannot have sidebar conversations. If you need to have a conversation, please take it outside in the hallway. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So uh, earlier when I reached, uh, asked about veterans reaching out, we got that information from the applicant and his app- application, is that correct?
Yes.
And that was the application that he submitted to you?
Yes.
Okay. In what zoning district of the borough is the uh, proposed property located?
Uh, town center.
Um, okay. I have what has been previously marked as exhibit PC four. Do you recognize this document?
Yes.
Uh, what is it?
This is uh, twenty-seven, three oh one, which is the regulations and standards applicable to all zoning districts wherein it uh, lists infill standards and then goes on to land uses.
Okay, and on page two of this, it has a chart, um, and there's a entertainment hall uh, row essentially. Um, is entertainment hall permitted by conditional use in the TC district?
Yes.
Okay. Um, moving on to uh, what's been previously marked as PC five, uh, do you recognize this image?
Yes.
Uh, what is this?
Uh, this is a Chester County Chesco user, GIS, um, geographic information systems, uh, map of the subject property.
And does this map just generally depict the uh, area of the layout of the uh, area?
Yes, it's zoomed in at one inches fifty feet at this uh, view.
Okay, and what's generally on the property now?
Uh, there's a, an improved building and a uh, private parking lot in the rear with, I believe, four to six spaces.
Okay. Back. Just one second. Uh, I'd like to work through some of the conditional use standards with you now, so that's going to take us back to PC two. Um, and if you look at twenty-seven dash nine oh five point five E, as in elephant. Um. It's on page two of this uh, document. Um, does it read that the applicant shall provide evidence with supporting documentation that the interior traffic circulation for the proposed use at the proposed location, including but not limited to alteration and deceleration lanes, where required at the proposed entrances to the location, shall be adequate to provide safe and convenient circulation for users of the facility, visitors to the facility, employees of the facility, and all emergency vehicles that may require entrance thereon. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, uh, you've been here, um, well, actually, I recognize that this property is already developed, um, so I, I recognize that. Um, in the application materials that you received, did you receive any evidence with supporting doc- supporting documentation uh, regarding subsection E?
No.
Okay, you were here this evening for the entire hearing. Uh, did the applicant prevent, present any evidence regarding E?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Moving on to subsection F uh, of the conditional use standards, does it read that the applicant shall provide evidence with supporting documentation that the facility or use provides safe and convenient pedestrian access and internal circulation within the grounds of the facility? And particularly for points of access from the facility to the parking areas? Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Uh, in the applicant's materials, did he provide that to you?
I do not believe so.
Okay. And have we seen any supporting documentation of that criteria uh, this evening?
No.
Um, focusing now on H as in happy, uh, of the conditional use standards, does it read that the applicant shall provide evidence with supporting documentation that the local fire department has the abilities to provide adequate fire protection and emergency management services for their proposed use? Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Have uh, we heard anything from the appropriate fire department regarding uh, the proposed use?
No.
And has the uh, applicant presented any evidence of that?
No.
Moving on to uh, subsection J, uh, it says the applicant shall provide evidence with supporting documentation that the existing or proposed sanitary sewage facility, disposal facilities have sufficient capacity for the proposed use. Um, in the applicant's materials, did he provide any materials regarding the sanitary sewage disposal facilities?
No.
Um, and have we seen any supporting documentation of that tonight?
No.
Subsection K, um, of the conditional use standards reads, "The applicant shall provide evidence with supporting documentation that the existing or proposed municipal water supply facilities have sup- sufficient capacity for the proposed use." Um, in the applicant's materials, did you receive any sort of supporting documentation regarding the water supply facilities?
No.
Okay, and in this evening's hearing, have we seen any supporting uh, documentation regarding water supply facilities?
No.
Um. Okay. I'd like to uh, switch gears again and going back to uh, PC three, um, and again focusing on the narrative. When you saw that veterans or veterans reaching out LLC was uh, listed in the application, um, did you conduct a search of veterans reaching out on the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of State Bureau of Corporations and Charitable Organizations website?
I, I did a search, I believe, that ended there, yes.
Okay. I have what has been marked as uh, PC six. You could just flip to that really quickly. And do you recognize PC six?
Yes.
Uh, what is PC six?
Uh, this is the cease and desist order for uh, two veterans reaching out and/or John Mizzick.
Okay, and uh, did you observe this on the Department of State's website?
I believe that was the location.
Okay. Um. Focusing on the middle part of that paragraph, there's some bold language. Um. Does it read in part, hereby orders veterans reaching out and/or John Mizzick to immediately cease and desist from soliciting contributions on behalf of or as a charitable organization? Did I read at least that segment correctly?
Yes.
Okay. And again, is veterans reaching out listed in the application narrative that the applicant provided to you?
Veterans Reaching Out LLC is.
Okay, and is Mr. Mizzick's name listed in the application as well?
Yes.
Okay. I have what's been uh, marked as exhibit uh, PC seven, so we're just gonna keep moving on. Do you recognize uh, this printout from a website?
Yes.
Uh, what is this printout from a website?
Um, this goes back, well, this is from March twenty twenty-two. And this is disciplinary actions against charitable organizations. So this is a uh, separate write-up on, from Penn Watch on uh, disciplinary actions.
And is the subject of this uh, website veterans reaching out and/or John Mizzick?
Yes.
All right, I have what's been marked as uh, PC uh, eight. Do you recognize this?
Yes.
Does it appear to be a memorandum from Judge Sylvia Rambo?
Yes.
And is it on page two? Is it at least dated May twelfth of twenty seventeen?
Correct.
Okay, um. I'm not gonna ask you to read anything from this, nor am I gonna read from this, but um, we have it in the uh, packets for everybody else, but um, I would note the date of the uh, proposed order or memorandum and just move on from there. Um. Looking at PC nine, do you recognize uh, this printout?
Yes.
Uh, does it again fairly and accurately depict an article from the Oklahoman?
Yes.
Um, I'm not gonna ask you to read anything from it, but uh, again, the board or Borough Council has it. Um, and I'll let you guys review that uh, at the appropriate time. Mr. Mizzick uh, candidly admitted about the uh, misinterpretation of the uh, Borough's ordinance. Um, did you ever have cause to issue a cease and desist for the applicant and/or the subject property?
Yes.
Um, so I have what's been marked as PC ten. Do you recognize this exhibit?
Yes.
Uh, what is this exhibit?
Uh, this is a smaller version of what was placarded on three thirteen Bridge Street uh, for them having uh, moved in machines, put signage up, and apparently just about to open up to operate.
Okay, and what's the date of this cease and desist order?
November fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
Uh, and did you prepare this order?
Yes.
Okay, and can you describe, uh, and I guess I actually already did, sorry. I'll withdraw that question. And again, the cease and desist order is dated November fifteenth of twenty twenty-three?
Correct.
Okay. Um. I know in the beginning that there was a, uh, an issue regarding a, a signed lease versus an unsigned lease. So I'd like to direct your attention to PC eleven. Does this appear to be the copy of the signed release, signed lease that you received?
Yes.
Okay, and does it fairly and accurately depict uh, at least the copy of the lease that you provided?
Yes.
And who provided this to you?
Um. This came to me through my department assistant, and my understanding is directly from John Mizzick.
Thank you. If you flip to the very, very last page of this um, signed lease, there is a second addendum to commercial lease, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and at least in sub-paragraph A, or sorry, in the first um, sentence, does it appear to be dated August thirty-first of twenty twenty-three? Sorry.
Oh, um, second addendum to commercial lease, thirty-one day, October, yes.
Of twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay, and then uh, you actually got a copy of the highlighted language, which was my doing. Um. Uh. Focusing on sort of the second highlighted um, sentence, does it read, "In the event that the tenant has received any violations from the Borough of Phoenixville or any other governing body with respect to tenant's use, including but not limited to noise notices or public nuisance notices, Landlord shall. Not be required to provide ninety days notice, but instead shall be permitted to immediately terminate the lease. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
And again, this addendum, which is signed uh by Mr. Mizzick, is dated. October thirty first of twenty twenty three? Is that correct? In the first?
In the first, yes, October.
Okay.
First.
And then the cease and desist that you issued in. PC ten. That's dated November fifteenth of twenty twenty three, is that correct?
Yes.
So despite being put on notice by um. The landlord at least regarding uh violations on October thirty first of twenty twenty three. The applicant then received a notice of violation approximately fifteen days later, is that correct?
Well, we see the cease and desist.
Cease and desist. Okay, for a violation, is that correct?
Correct.
Mr. Bulker, is there anything that I haven't covered that you wish to uh let uh Borough Council know about or? Um, anything that I have missed in regards to this uh examination?
Not that I can think of.
All right. We have no other witnesses and no other exhibits. I would formally move for the admission of all of the planning commission's exhibits, P one through P eleven. But we have no other witnesses and no other evidence.
Any objections to the entrance of exhibits PC one through PC eleven?
Several.
On what basis?
They're factually inaccurate. They have a still length of veterans reaching out. I've already explained counsel.
I I this is not a opportunity for you to testify, this is an opportunity for you to explain on what legal basis. These exhibits should not be entered into the record.
You tell me, I can't tell you, but.
You, you need to explain what the inaccuracies are. No, your verbal disagreement with what they reflect. Is testimony. Because. There is another exhibit that this was doctored or, you know?
No, the information that they're providing. Isn't accurate. They have us, uh, you said I couldn't, I won't.
Well, I I'm trying to understand here. So, are you suggesting that, I I'll just go through the exhibits one by one. Are you suggesting that exhibit PC one? Is not a blank conditional use form from the borough?
No, I I would.
Okay.
I withdraw whatever it is I have to withdraw.
So, are you suggesting that exhibit PC two is not an accurate depiction of? Chapter twenty seven, section twenty seven dash nine nine oh five of the borough zoning ordinance?
No.
Are you suggesting that? Exhibit PC three is not an accurate representation of what you submitted to the borough?
That's the lease? No.
Are you suggesting that exhibit PC four? Is not an accurate representation of section twenty seven dash three oh one of the borough code?
No.
Are you suggesting that exhibit PC five is not an accurate depiction of the Board of Assessment website? Of parcel fifteen dash nine dash one oh five?
No.
Are you suggesting that PC six is not an accurate depiction of a cease and desist order? Issued by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of State Bureau of Corporations and Charitable Organizations? So this is an inaccurate, this is a doctor, document.
I don't know that it's awkward to inaccurate.
So this is not a document that you believe was issued by the Department of State? It's a yes or no question.
No, I don't have many objections.
Okay. So are you suggesting that exhibit PC seven is not an accurate depiction of an article? Okay, understood. With that, exhibits PC one through PC eleven will be entered into the record.
Thank you, sir.
Um, Mr. Mizzick, you have an opportunity to cross-examine the witness. Okay, um Borough Council, any questions for Mr. Bulker?
Yes, uh, Mr. Bulker, in your position is uh, well, in your position as borough official, uh. The, the building property, is it uh currently uh compliant for ADA accessibility in either entrance or bathroom? Uh, situation?
I, uh, we haven't done anything as far as a building code assessment for the use group, so. We haven't even gotten that far yet to see that under the construction code, this use could occupy the structure.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from council, Mr. Kirkner?
Yes, thank you, yes, uh. Mr. Bulker, regarding the um completeness, completeness of the application. How would you characterize? The completeness of the application, was it sufficiently complete? To grant a conditional use?
To offer the applicant a hearing because they had a signed lease to submit the application, yes. Uh, and that took a little bit to get there. At first, a blank lease was what was, unsigned, unexecuted blank lease was what was first presented. Um, and then an executed one was. Um, beyond. Beyond those very minimal administrative. Portions of an application. It. Because of the nature of the process. Essentially no longer my duty to guide them on how good of an application it might be. If that makes any sense.
So this is um. This is somewhat different from, say, someone. Applying for a permit to build a shed or a fence and needs a little. A little guidance. This rises to another level.
This rises to another. I'm sorry to interrupt there, um, to use your example for, for a simple home building project, I mean, that, that's a matter of. It, it is our duty to assist those that, that are not getting into professional endeavors and are not going to have a hearing in front of council. Uh, it stays in-house and it's, it's our job to help them through that.
But there's only so much you can do.
Absolutely.
I mean, maybe five, ten minutes. And then if it gets beyond that. You're getting pretty deep into the weeds with some.
Uh, sometimes it does come to, is there anyone else that can help you, you know, prepare this or?
Right.
Um, uh, you know, if it requires, well, it may not require. Might be a strong suggestion for the use of a professional services such as an architect or an engineer in a uh residential setting. Or an attorney for a hearing, right?
Okay. Right, with regard to uh some of the items um. Brought out. About chapter twenty seven. Nine uh nine oh five. By. E, F, H, and J, things regarding. Circulation and um. Uh, safe and convenient pedestrian access. Um, fire protection. And supporting documentation regarding sanitary sewage. Uh, disposal, et cetera. That was not, that information was not included in the conditional use application. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. In previous uses at this building. And they were not conditional uses.
Correct.
From what I understand, they were by right uses. Were these requirements for occupancy permits?
Well, for construction permits or change of use permits, whether it can, actual physical construction is uh planned or not. If there's a change of use that's not a conditional use in front of a uh uh council. If there's a change of use that is proposed in the state of Pennsylvania, it's to be recorded through the building permit process. Whether anything is proposed or not. And that way, the establishment of, are there enough plumbing facilities and fixtures for the occupant load? Uh, is there actual um internal circulation between shelving of stores, is that width appropriate? Uh, those would be things that would uh come out as part of an architectural blueprint for uh on a building permit application.
Okay, so, so although those items may not be. Checklisted in a by right use. They are in effect.
They, they may certainly become part of the process. If um. They would become part of the process as part of the construction code process, but none other umbrella of that I handle, right?
And with regard to uh item. PC eleven, the lease, and that very last page, the highlighted section. Have, have you received any information that the landlord? Has executed? Um, discontinuing the lease?
I have not.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, thank you.
Any other questions from council? If none, I have a question for Mr. Bulker, um, referring to PC eleven. Uh, it, it appears that. The signature page. For PC eleven uh. Is signed November first twenty twenty three and November third twenty twenty three, is that correct?
Well, I'm looking on the last page, seeing eleven three twenty twenty three.
Yes, not the second addendum, the, the last page of the original lease.
Just short of the exhibit A. Yes, eleven one twenty twenty three.
And moving to the last page, the second addendum. Am I correct that the second addendum is dated October thirty first twenty twenty three?
The printed version, yes.
And. That section A refers to a commercial lease dated October twenty eighth twenty twenty three?
Yes.
I have no further questions. Um, and with that, Mr. Jefferson, um. I understand you have no further evidence or witnesses, do you rest?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Mizzick, do you have any rebuttal testimony?
No.
Okay, um. With that, do we have any comment from the public in the room, if you would like to comment on this application? Uh, let the record reflect, there is none, um. Anyone on Zoom, would you like to give a public comment um on this application? Let the ref, let the record reflect, there is none, um. So, uh. Typically, council takes the application and the testimony and exhibits uh presented here today under advisement. Um, and will uh render a decision within. Uh, forty-five days of the date that it uh makes said decision. Um, before we entertain a motion to continue the hearing until April ninth twenty twenty four at seven PM. Do the parties have closing arguments? Mr. Jefferson?
No, um, well, yes, uh, sorry, um, I, I think. If you, if council is inclined to grant uh the conditional use application, there are certainly some conditions that were articulated during the testimony that. The planning commission would like um. To be uh incorporated into that decision. Um, should council decide not to, uh, there are objective standards that have not been complied with. And that could be the form of a basis of a denial if you so choose, or you could grant it subject to conditions, so. Uh, that is, that is it.
All right, thank you. Um, with that, I will entertain a motion to continue the hearing until April ninth twenty twenty four at seven PM. And resume our public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or comments? All those four?
I.
opposed? All right, we have returned to our public meeting, thank you.
Very thank.
Okay, with that, we will resume our agenda tonight, we have section twelve, uh, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. We'll start with Ms. Dugan coming out of the Historic Architecture and Review Board.
Everything was already on the consent agenda.
Okay, Mr. Moore, Planning Commission?
Uh, we have one plan to uh consider tonight, uh, as we have been doing with the uh. Uh, previously, I'm gonna allow the um. I'm going to have the solicitor introduce the uh resolution of the council of the borough. To approve the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for the development known as Paradise Village, so.
Was that a motion?
No, I was handing it off to the solicitor.
I apologize, doing some housekeeping as well, um. So, this is the project known as Paradise Village, this project relates to two parcels of land located at one ninety Paradise Street. Next to the Borough Fire Station, more particularly identified as Chester County UPI numbers fifteen dash eight dash twenty-two. And fifteen dash eight dash twenty-four, consisting of approximately five point eight seven acres of land. The applicant proposes to develop the site with a five-story building. With twelve thousand six hundred and seventy square feet of commercial space on the ground floor. And two hundred residential units on the second through fifth floors, with surface and underbuilding parking. With a hundred and ninety-six dedicated residential, forty-two dedicated, dedicated, dedicated commercial. And forty-five shared residential slash commercial parking spaces. Including eleven residential, fourteen shared, nine commercial, and two accessible. Electro, electric vehicle charging parking spaces. Concrete sidewalks, a twelve-foot wide trail. Twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight square feet of public open space. The extension of Hall Street from Paradise Street, stormwater management facilities and related improvements. This project was reviewed at a number of planning commission meetings and was recommended for approval by the planning commission by a vote of seven to zero. I believe the applicant is here today, uh, i- if council is inclined to ask. Our applicant's attorney, any questions, uh, the project uh illustrative rendering is on the screen before you.
Is the applicant here or just? Well. You're here on behalf of the applicant. But the applicant is not here to answer project-related questions.
Well, I'm here as a representative of the applicant.
Fair enough.
And I, I think uh your solicitor did a, a good job uh describing the project, it is at. The intersection of Paradise Street. Uh, and what will be the Hall Street extension to Paradise Street, uh. This is, I guess with the right of way you acquired from TAG and with the improvements, uh, the road improvements as part of this project. This would help the, that Hall Street extension come to fruition. And is also proposed with it some, uh, I guess completing the trail extension to uh Paradise Street along the property line. Of this uh property as well.
Uh, all right, so then I'll make the motion because we, we don't really have one on the floor yet, um, so I'll just make the motion, the. Borough of Phoenixville officially approved the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan. For the Paradise Village.
Second.
I'd just like to do summarize and point out to the council, um, there are five. Uh, sal, uh subdivision and land development ordinance, uh waivers requested. All of which were uh satisfied by the Borough Traffic Engineer. The slope of this, the slope of the location is such that it's basically just at the bottom of the hill from where. Uh, Luxor Building is, so there were the, the um A, B, and C. In terms of not having to provide sidewalks and a planning strip or street lighting along the southwest side. Of the new Hall Street, basically because nothing would fit in there. Um, and also, there was also um. The uh. The street slopes. The street slopes preservation um is less than the required minimum preservation again because of the nature of the of the site. Um there was a discussion and I did appreciate um. There is going to be, there are going to preserve at least nine of the um. Trees that are of the vigorous trees on the property as shown in the plans of thirty that were identified by the uh. Uh the arborist study, so um obviously you can't keep all the trees if you're gonna build a building. Um. And it's pretty interesting that it's gonna be just a mixture of um, there will be commercial on the first floor and on the corner. So it kind of continues. What's what's being already putting into place now that we've upgraded Paradise Road. We have a fire station where it is, and it it's gonna really add to a an interesting way that the bill borough is kind of growing out. There, and we've already grown out on the other side of the creek at Steel Point.
So we have a motion and a second, just to classify that or just to quantify that. Uh questions for the applicant, questions on the project? Um this is a long skinny lot. It's a weird lot.
Correct.
Um there's the little key on the on the display right now depicting sort of the footprint of the building proposed. Would you be able to say how much of that lot you're actually utilizing?
I say, I think it's a a five and a half acre lot about. Two, close to two acres is gonna be given up as part of the right-of-way or the road. Um. There is probably uh the the dedicated open space or the public open space is twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight square feet. There is a uh probably about another acre of ground uh moving towards downtown that's still. Want to be open green area that'll run along, I guess, the border of the uh with the trail going out there. So their overall development is probably on about uh two and a half to three acres of the lot.
Okay. The one other thing that counsel may be interested in is a- as a part of this project. Um the developer has agreed to build a trail connection from Luxor. Down across the portion of Hall Street that they have committed to build um and to connect to uh. The Schuylkill River Trail there, French Creek Trail, excuse me. Um. So it it will not only connect their development to the trail, but also um Luxor.
I have no further comments? Hoping that I'm the only one that's having this issue, but.
In between the Babirus Field and the fire station.
It's but it will have Jean pull up the map so we can pinpoint the parcel and.
I'm sorry for not saying that into the mic. Um while we're doing that, I think it'd be helpful to clarify too, just for uh those that have followed along. The pedestrian improvements that would be uh that we were discussing, like where the trail exactly would be. And it looks like there's gonna be a full ten-foot sidewalk on the s- south side, north side, south.
Correct, on the on the north side because uh they could not provide the improvements on the south side related to. I guess where that slope is, uh the request that the planning commission was to provide a ten-foot wide sidewalk running along the front of the built.
On the Hall Street, but the trail is still.
Trail's behind it.
The trail is still there then.
And it'll run between this project and the fire station all and then. The goal is for it to run all the way down to where it connects outside of this building.
Great.
If I got anything.
So this parcel is right next to the fire station. Um and. As Mr. Murray said, the trail will be in between the building and the fire station. Um as a part of the uh. Take development, uh we have an easement that will allow us to connect the portion of the trail uh that they're building to. Portion here. Um and to give some clarity on uh Mr. Carmenito's question. Uh the ordinance requires five-foot sidewalks on either side of the road. Um. Based on the topography, since we couldn't get sidewalk on the one side, we asked the developer to provide both five feet. The total of ten feet on the other side, which is how how we came to the ten-foot number.
One, one other question while we're on it. So when it looks like, it's about two questions. So on the plan. Like the landscape plan, this would be recorded, so all of these improvements that are shown landscaping improvements need to be done, correct?
That's correct.
And then where the trail goes along the building there, just seems like it's a little bit of a funky detail. Just curious if you talked about that or what that would look like, where it goes right up against the building.
So that was purposeful, um because uh kind of on the other side of that. Funky detail you're talking about is the driveway behind our fire station. And our fire trucks need to be sure that they can get close enough to the building um in case of an emergency event. So that that funky detail, they're actually shoring up um underneath the trail to make sure that it can support the weight of our. Fire engines. So uh it's in that particular location, uh which is why the funky detail is is there as it is.
Yeah, when you look at that, um Mr. Weiss, it looks flat. It's not. I mean, it it really slopes up from from where Luxor is, where DeSanto Field is.
It's about a fifty foot variance between the saddle field and the bottom of this property.
Right.
If I could just walk you so you get an understanding, we're bringing the the French Creek Trail right through here. We got that easement from TAG. And we would be coming along through here, which is just at the borough's property. And right about here, we tie into uh these two properties, which is the subject of the approval tonight. Uh so the roadway is intended to connect here. Basically coming through here and marrying up a little bit further down through here. That Hall Street section right through here. And so the building is primarily right in this area right here. Here's our fire station. Here's our driveway access, and this is the trail connection. And then, of course, this is all new Paradise Street.
Um and and maybe I I missed it, but um did we do a traffic impact study for how this is gonna affect uh specifically where Paradise intersects with twenty-three? Like, I'm just thinking of of are 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 we gonna be able to handle the congestion that we have there? I know we have recently redone Paradise Street.
We did, and we took that into consideration and designed uh to meet exactly where uh the Hall Street connection is gonna come out here. And then in this intersection in phase two, which is coming before you next week, uh this section is intended to. Signalize as a four-way intersection uh on Nut Road to accommodate traffic coming. Either across on this Hall Street connection or coming out of the Steel Point connection uh project.
There is a full traffic impact study in the packet.
Okay, and is that contingent like to uh is making that adjustment at, I guess, Nut and Paradise? Um something that needs to be done for this, what we're approving tonight to work? Or is that just something, a a thing that should happen afterwards?
Their project will have a a a some aspect of of impact on it. But in our, in that traffic impact study, you'll see that we've been, we've been anticipating these things for going back several years. And that's why in the Paradise Street, we took as much of the Paradise Street to widen for ingress and egress off of Nut Road. And making that a four-way intersection. So uh the folks at the apartment complex and the Chevrolet dealership. Will be able to come out through a signalized intersection versus where they come out now uh right east or south of the. Uh trestle where you can't see the driveway on the Holly Court Apartments. And then the. Uh the uh the dealership will be allowed to, that intersection will allow them to take their trucks into the lot versus what they do. In the middle lane uh and offload vehicles there. All that's been anticipated uh as part of the design.
Okay, thank you.
Uh and either the applicant or or Scott, can you give a little more background on the Hall Street building, the actual uh road agreement? Is that something that um? I'm concerned about it, something that was uh very much at the forefront when we were discussing the fire station. And, you know, three years later, the road is still the way it is. That project hasn't moved forward, so I'm just concerned about. Projects actually being completed.
Sure, so uh certainly we can never require a developer to build their project, right? It has to do with the funding that they receive, but um in talking to uh the applicant and. Mr. Murray, their attorney, um what we did in this case is we negotiated um. Uh and there may be some tweaks, but um uh of form easement agreement that if. Uh this development does not construct Hall Street in a certain amount of time, we have an easement over that area to do so. Um and and that will, and that easement will be agreed to and recorded. Um. I believe the the resolution says within sixty days of approval this resolution, so. Uh certainly, we, you know, from a. Benefit of the community standpoint, um I hope that the developers, you know, in a position to build a project and construct the road. But i- if that doesn't happen to be the case, uh we will then have the rights to build the road ourselves, and we won't have to worry about a condemnation situation.
Uh just so I'm following that guideline, we are not as conditioned of the approval. Placing the Paradise Road developer to build past their property, the Hall Street extension. If the current organization that is has is unable to do it, that is supposed to complete it out to. Um to uh Bridge Street, we would, the the borough would have the right to build that itself. Is that correct? Did I understand that like is what you said?
Um so. The application that's before us today, uh the condition in the resolution is to build it to their property line. You're you're correct. Um and because it has that long tail, uh it gets close to where the the Steelworks development that you're talking about. Um where they're, for lack of a better term, cul-de-sac ends. Um however, there there is no um. You know, ability to require the Paradise Village uh developer to complete from the edge of their property to Bridge Street. Um so yeah, that's something we would have to pursue. It had moved forward, right? And it was one of those things that uh when we reviewed the Steelworks project uh. We had an idea that this project was coming forward, but we didn't have the full view, you know, now hindsight's twenty twenty. Um but we we did our best with that resolution to put in what we could and um now trying to get them to to mesh together.
Other questions for the applicant? I appreciate that it doesn't have a name starting or ending with steel iron or any other.
It's a parallel.
River, uh so. Kudos on a new naming convention that will be easier.
Um before we uh take action, are there any comments from the public in the room on this project? Mr. Lutz, please approach the the mic.
Thank you. Um in my experience, not a professional in this. Open space in a development is often dedicated to the required retention retention basins or overflow water. Um in looking at this site on Google Maps, it looks like it's all forest. And what I'd like to see is as much, I mean, it's hard to describe the importance of the ecosystem around a mature tree. But when we have open space that's actually bulldozed in order to create this man-made. Retention basin, we lose the character of what open space implies in our heads. And actually is better for the environment and for uh people living there and the people in the community. So I would appeal to the developer to retain as many of the mature trees as possible. Um and to limit the man-made open space. Thank you.
On this project, uh the, is the stormwater a basin or is it an underground system or?
I believe all of the stormwater is underground. Um.
I I think you're correct because the 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 green area up is, I I'm not aware that debate, there's any basins there.
There is a level spreader that's directed at the uh. French Creek, but it does not uh encumber the open space area.
Yeah, I believe the stormwater is under the parking area, and then there's that, as Scott indicated, a level spreader uh discharging it. Down.
Any public comment from Zoom?
Fred, I've turned on your microphone.
And uh my eyes finally did focus. I see proposed stormwater management under the parking area to the side there.
Mr. Luchter, you need to turn on your microphone, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Fred, if you'd like to make a comment, uh we can, uh we we can't hear you if you're trying to make comment.
All right, um we'll have to move on um because this technology is not working. Um so. Uh with that, we'll close public comment, and I can move forward with the motion.
Any comments or questions from counsel for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries seven one. Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore, anything else out of planning commission tonight?
Uh no- nothing else. And there uh there is a um meeting scheduled for this Thursday. Um at at our normal time of six P M.
Yep, March fourteenth, yep, okay. Uh Mr. Kirkner, Phoenix Regional Planning Committee.
Nothing of uh of note that's worth belaboring this meeting anymore for.
Very good. Uh Ms. Dugan with Rec Board.
I do have to mention some things, but I'll try to do this as briefly as possible. Uh there is a parents' night out coming up on Friday, March fifteenth from five thirty to eight thirty. Uh Mental Health Awareness Day is May fourth at from ten A M to one P M at the rec center. Uh the Days Off School Snapology Pokemon is when during spring break, and that's um April tenth. At from nine to four days off. Uh Theater Work- Work- Workshop is April. Ten to twenty-third. Um then we've got the Spring Social Pickleball Tor- Tournament. And that's May twelfth at nine, at nine A M. And also, one of the things. And also one of the things that was already mentioned by both the mayor and Ms. Berkeley was the, our demi semi septennial birthday party that we're having.
Nailed it.
I worked on it. And that's at the rec center on April twentieth from five to eight thirty P M. There'll be more information you can look into for all the programs and things that we're going to have there. It'll be a lot of fun that day. The Yoga Fun with Bunnies is Wednesday, March twentieth from six to seven. And then we've got a couple of spring break camps, Young Rembrandt Art Camp, the yoga camp and the coed sports camp. The animation studio camp, FaceTime Theater Camp. And then we've got our summer programs, our summer camps. The playground camp is already sold out. So anything you're interested in these summer camps, you know, you should check that out and get on that pretty quickly. We've got the mini camps that are either each one week apiece. Check that out. The summer tennis camps and Orange Crush Tournament. Science Explorers, Youth Yoga Mindfulness Summer Camp, that's in June, too. Youth Quad Ball Summer Camp. Youth NFL Flag Football Summer Camp, Basketball Summer Camp. Sports College Days Summer Camp, Young Rembrandt Art Camp. Fundamental Tennis Summer Camp. Chess Wizards Summer Camp, Snapology. And and then we go to youth, youth and family programs. We've got youth outdoor pickleball at Manavon Park at April twenty ninth through June third from four to five P M. Jump Starts T-Ball League is April thirteenth to June eighth. Soccer Shots is March twenty sixth to May fourteenth. Quidditch is on, depending on your age, Tuesdays or Thursdays from April to May. And skateboarding also Tuesdays and Thursdays. Oh, they're both Thursdays, but one's in the April program from April fourth to April twenty fifth, May twenty third to June thirteenth. The art classes. For the the Papa Basketball, Summer Basketball League from seven, for seven to seventeen year olds. Fundamentals of Tennis on Thursdays, May twenty sixth to June sixth. And the Chess Wizards for grades six to eleven. That's an eight week session, April tenth to May twenty ninth. And that's all for now.
Thank you. Mr. Carmenito with Tech.
Tree Commission Volunteers are out printing trees this Saturday and you'll continue to see the contract planning taking place. So new trees going to Fronetown. So next meeting is in April.
Trees look great. Well done. Ms. Berkeley with H R C.
We are meeting regularly. We do have one opening. I do believe we received an application this week, but certainly open to anyone applying for review. And then we also are working to set up a meeting and some trainings for our commission with the state H R C.
Thank you. That brings us to section thirteen of tonight's agenda. Council action referred from our various boards and committees. So we have first on the list is Personnel, Public Safety Committee, Ms. Berkeley.
Thanks for bearing with me, council members, public and those who have come out for consideration for appointment. I know this has been a long meeting. Because we had many applicants, some were able to come, some were not. I was able to connect with some offline. I did want to invite anyone that was interested in appointment to come introduce themselves to council and then we can move forward. So we'll just go in order of the agenda. I do see that J D Maloney is here. He and I have spoken, but if you would just come up and introduce yourself to council and we will go in that order and try to be as easeful as possible for everybody.
Great, thanks. J D Maloney, eight one six Gay Street, lived in Phoenixville since two thousand and six. And I'm interested in being on the Civil Service Commission. If you had a chance to look at my resume, I was born and raised in Bennington, Vermont. My grandfather Maloney was the sheriff of Bennington County for thirty nine years. My other grandfather was the chief of police of Manchester, Vermont. My stepfather was a Vermont State Trooper. My uncle was a town police officer. I joined the Navy in nineteen eighty three and I was, one of my collateral duties was a master at arms. One of only three master at arms on my ship. And as Mr. Crack knows, everybody in the Navy on a ship learns how to fight fires. So there's no fire company out, out, out at sea. So I have, you know, soft place in my heart for both police and fire. And I, as far as living in Phoenixville, I have been involved in scouts for fifteen plus years. I'm now the current committee chairman for troop fifty eight chartered by the V F W. And I also am a board member for P M Y C. So hopefully, my qualifications fit okay for appointment to the Civil Service Commission. Any questions or?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So with that, Mr. Maloney is the only applicant for the civil service. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to consider his request for appointment or to appoint him to civil service as an alternate for a term expiring January thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Carmenito for the appointment of J D Maloney to civil service. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Welcome aboard, J D. We appreciate it.
Thanks for sticking it out tonight, too. Okay, I do see that some of our applicants did need to leave or have not arrived, but we do have three applicants in the audience tonight. So I'll just ask each one of them. They are all applicants for the same commission. So I would each ask each to come up and in order of the agenda. So Josh Gould, Amanda Irwin, and then Deborah Johnson. Just introduce yourself, what you, you know, explain what brought you to come to the planning commission. And then, of course, if council has questions.
Good evening. Josh Gould, I live on Dayton Street. Been in Phoenixville for most of my life, very involved with the community in a wide variety of ways. If you have my resume, you can, you can see them. I do want to say upfront, it really wasn't my intention to displace any incumbents who were interested in being reappointed. I looked through the boards and commissions and decided the planning commission was the one I was most interested in and saw that there were two expiring terms. So I applied. Since then, I found out that the two expiring terms are both interested in being reappointed, which is fine. If council wants new blood on planning commission, then I'd like to be considered. But I think it's totally understandable that you want experience with the, the building codes and so forth, all the precedents that have happened in the discussions in the past. And if you're going to reappoint the two experienced members, I'm perfectly fine waiting for another opportunity to apply. If I get tired of waiting for an opening on planning commission, I'll apply for something else that, that has openings. So that's basically what I wanted to tell you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I would just like to know what your, what's your current, as a longtime servant, public servant, I don't know, variety of ways. What's your current perspective on the state of growth? In the, in the borough, how and how we're handling planning? And if you would like to bring anything different to what you've seen so far. You've been here a while, so you've watched it happen. So if you have any thoughts about what we think would be different.
I don't really have any intent to change how it's happening. Are you talking about process or are you talking about like?
No, not more, more direction and how, how we're approaching things. We have a new plan that we adopted two years ago, comprehensive plan. So it's just interested in your perspective because the planning commission is where that is kind of where the rubber meets the road to start with.
Yeah, I mean, if I had my way and was king and could dictate how things happen, I'd love to see lots of things happen. I'd like to see some of the success from Bridge Street extend up to Church Street. I'd like to see retail, you know, a little more variety in retail as opposed to more dining options and that kind of thing. I think there's plenty of that already. Love to see, you know, continue to expand the trail networks and that kind of thing. The, the recreation options that are, that are offered to the, the community are all great. I think, you know, planning commission doesn't get to decide what things it's going to, it doesn't get to initiate these projects. It looks at the things that are brought to them. So I wouldn't, as a member of planning commission, wouldn't have an opportunity to initiate any of those things I'm talking about, but, but those are the kinds of things that, that are of interest to me.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Josh.
Mr. Murray.
Hi. Thank you guys for also sticking it out. My name is Amanda Irwin and I've been a resident in Phoenixville for just about six years now. I live on the north side in one of the older homes in Van Der Slay Street with my husband. And I'm sure you guys hear that. Well, actually, I don't know if you hear this all the time, but I absolutely love Phoenixville. I love living here. I love it so much that my husband and I got married in Reeves Park just about a year ago. Peter married us and then we had a reception downtown as well. And we had a hundred people come downtown. I didn't, I didn't hear one park complain about parking, but I did have very detailed instructions on where to park. So of course, when I found out that there were vacancies, I got very excited and I wanted to give back some of my time to a community that's given me so much. And why I specifically gravitated towards the planning commission and why I think I would be an asset to the planning commission is just for a couple of points that I don't think I really clearly articulated in the other meeting, but I feel like I have a pretty good understanding of planning and development based on my work experience. So I work for now six years. I've worked for two separate engineering firms and I've been pretty involved in the A E C world. One of the firms were focused on development. The other firm that I'm working with now works on transportation engineering and a slew of other services as well, like environmental water resources, whole thing. So I feel like onboarding me would be pretty simple, would be a little bit easier just because of my background and some of the knowledge I have. And then secondly, I really do believe and I agree with a lot of the stuff that you guys have in your most recent comprehensive plan that you guys published in twenty twenty two. And I know just working with planners, it's, and my thing is like, I know it's a planner's worst nightmare if one of their publications is sit on a shelf and doesn't get utilized. So if I was on the planning commission, I would try as I'm reviewing projects, reference that comprehensive plan and make sure the projects are in alignment and make sure that we're making recommendations. So the goals that you guys have in there will be completed. And then lastly, sort of what Mr. Gould was saying, I hope it came across that I'm passionate and energetic and I am looking for opportunities to give back to my community. So if you guys are more than happy to reappoint people on the planning commission, I'm going to look for other opportunities to volunteer.
Thank you.
I've been on, I'm Deb Johnston. I've been on the planning commission for probably twenty years and I think I bring a lot of experiences watching the growth of the borough. So I know a lot of the background things going on. I've been the representative from the planning, from our planning commission to the region since its inception. So I'm very well versed in the region and that connection to the borough. And I just would like to continue my service. That's all. Any questions?
Thank you all for braving the mic and braving the night. We appreciate all of you being here and your willingness to serve and your years of service for those of you who have served. At this point, I would like to make a motion to appoint Josh Gould for, to the planning commission for a term expiring March thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Carmenito. Questions on the motion? It's a close one. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
I would also like to make a motion to appoint Amanda Irwin for, to the planning commission for a term expiring March thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Carmenito. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay. Motion carries eight zero. Back to you, Ms. Berkeley.
Thank you.
Do we, are we number two?
We haven't spoken to the applicant at all, so I would prefer to wait until we can connect with her. I just, I feel more comfortable before making a motion.
Two and, and number five. So they'll be going back to personnel, public safety?
Correct. Yes.
Further, okay. So we'll invite them back to your next meeting.
Yes, I'm going to reach out between now and my next meeting, but I just don't feel comfortable making a motion until I speak to.
And that's been the procedure and policy of the board. So.
I would suggest a motion to table those two items.
Very good.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Those items have been tabled for next month. Moving on, Mr. Moore, Parks and Recreation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items from Parks and Rec in terms of community event and very event ones. I'll start with the one that was on, already on the agenda. As for a motion to approve a temporary community event application for the annual Dogwood Festival from May fifteenth through May eighteenth, six, six P M. to ten P M. Wednesday through Friday. And one P M. to ten P M. On Saturday, streets to be closed at Second and Third Avenue between Main and Star Streets throughout the event. For the Dogwood Parade, Paradise Street from Cedar Hollow opposite the fire station, Smithworks Boulevard from Paradise Street to Main Street. Main Street from Smithworks Boulevard to Fifth Avenue will be closed at eleven A M. for the, eleven, eleven A M. Not eleven P M. To two P M. On Saturday, May eighteen, twenty twenty four for the parade. No parking in the Smithworks Parking Lot and on Main Street from Smithworks Boulevard to Fifth Avenue. So that's my motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Strenfell. For this application, I know we have one abstention forthcoming. I won't make this a condition of the, the item, but I just want to stress, and I've spoken with the organizers that for, for a few years now, we've made some serious improvements to, to Reeves Park. And I would like to stress that between staff and the applicant, applying organization that no vehicles unnecessarily park, cross over sidewalks, park on grass. The, the newest vendor has done a nice job with for the most part, keeping the park in good shape, but we have a, we have plenty of places that they can park heavy machinery. It does not need to be in the middle of our, of our Crown Drill Parks. So that's something I would like to just continue to stress that between the staff and applicant. We ensure that the vehicles aren't just eighteen wheelers don't need to be in the middle of Reeves Park. And just parked there because they towed a vehicle there. So that's my one comment on that.
And we, we as staff already had a walkthrough meeting with the organizers of the event and the ride company to put forth all of those stipulations. So we were the applicant and the borough are already working towards making sure that those things are not happening unnecessarily.
Thank you.
And I just want to clarify, I think maybe if Kelly can just comment, the parade is actually going to be more than just a dogwood, the dogwood parade. It will also be the fire company's one hundred fiftieth anniversary parade and the borough's one hundred seventy fifth anniversary parade, correct?
Yeah, it's going to be a party. I mean, honestly, it's, it's going to be a big, huge event. We're working, borough staff, our fire chief, our police chief and the tenants and the mayor, we're working together to make this celebration and, and parade elongated as best as we can with the different parade route that we've, that we have looked at from the applicant. Just to accommodate the sheer size and amount of fire apparatus and police and other organizations that are sometimes involved, but even more so being involved in this parade as well as what the J C's are bringing to the table to help celebrate these, these occasions.
Very good. Any other questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero, one.
And this, I, the other item, uh, for temporary event consideration, uh, which was moved from, uh, the content agenda, uh, I can make a motion to approve a temporary community event application for the Borough Phoenixville fireworks display at Dayton Street Field, Dayton Street Field on Friday, July fifth, twenty twenty four from six P M. To ten thirty P M. Fillmore Street to be closed from Franklin Avenue to South Street from six P M. To ten P M.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on this motion, Mr. Kirkner?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. President, I, I asked for this to be broken out because I got a number of questions regarding this from the, from people who live up there at the end of South Street and Bailey and Almond Drive and Dayton Street. And I, I guess I, I read the application, this would be the staging area for the fireworks? Or?
This would be the staging area right, uh, just north of the, uh, gazebo area.
Of the what area?
The, uh, we're the, um, pavilion, pavilion, thank you. It'd be north of the pavilion back towards, uh, the field going back towards the river. So the area forward of that, people could arguably park and sit, but the staging area will be about halfway out into that field.
The, the field along Dayton Street or?
Uh, the, as I understand.
Disco field or?
It's in the disco area, correct?
That's, that's where they're setting up the fireworks.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so people won't be going up South Street to sit in that field to watch the fireworks because.
Not intended to do that. The intent is for them not to do that, but people are like water, they're gonna find a path of least resistance.
Right.
No matter what we do.
Right.
But that's the intent.
Okay, and, and the other concern expressed to me was about the, the cemetery there. I, I would hope that they close their gate that day.
They won't hear nothing. We.
Long night.
We, we, we've taken it, 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 we're gonna have to communicate with the, uh, the church to make sure that they, everything's.
Right, but there, but there is parking along Dayton Street, correct, correct? And people can park where there's.
Correct.
Where there's parking.
Correct.
So, okay. Now, if, I think that pretty much covers the, uh, the concerns I had, I, I mean, there is a concern about people crossing yards. Um, un-fenced properties up there.
We'll get a, a trial run on April twentieth.
Okay.
Because the celebration that we have will be doing the exact same setup for the, uh, the, uh, the one seventy fifth birthday. That, that night is the, the fireworks for, on April twentieth, so we'll, we'll get a trial run of that coming up. Not sure if the residents are aware of that happening. Uh, so if there's any communication, uh, that you have to just be a prelude to what happens in July fourth.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I will also offer, we did have a quick discussion, because it's been brought up before, it was brought up last year. What about using L E D lights and drones replacing the loud fireworks? Which cause a lot of pets are unhappy about and people that, um, the, the, the cost is still quite prohibitive and, and difficult to, to reconcile. Uh, so fireworks will continue, at least this year.
And then rain date has been proposed, it looks as well. Okay. Uh, I'll just say, I, I'm tired of fireworks, so I'm voting no on this, I'm, I think it's a, I think the time has come and gone and I think we've built to the point where we don't need to keep doing this, but, uh, with that, uh, was, uh, call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven one. Mr. Carmineo with part of Policy Committee.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to schedule an advertising ordinance amending chapter twenty four taxation special, part eight, neighborhood improvement district.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carmineo, second by Mr. Weiss. Close one. Questions on the motion? Pretty straightforward, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero, Mr. Carmineo.
President, I'll make a motion to schedule an advertising, advertising ordinance amending chapter fifteen, motor vehicles.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Carmineo, second by Ms. Berkeley, questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Move on to Mr. Weiss with I T T S.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, no action report this time, next meeting is seven P M. One week from tonight on the nineteenth.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Dugan, Finance Committee.
Everything was already covered.
Thank you. We'll open the second and final, uh, man. We'll open the second and final round of public participation, any members of the public wishing to make any public comment to council on any item? Uh, please either raise your hand digitally on the Zoom platform or make your way to the podium. Gotta keep up, you know?
Yeah, keep up. Okay, uh, David Lutzker from, um, Morgan Street and president of the Phoenixville Green Team. Um, I wanted to let the council members know that, um, the green team is sponsoring, uh, bringing back, uh, a community gathering called Green Drinks. Uh, Green Drinks is a reopen to the public gathering of like-minded people, environmentally minded people um, to, uh, network, socialize, uh, learn a little, get some updates. Um, and included, um, on March eighteenth, it will be the third Monday going forward at lock twenty nine. Um, I get questions all the time about SOMAX, about kindergarten center, about, um, well, now Park House Track, so, so some of the things that we're looking to update the community on. Um, so I would love if any of you could join us, um, and even provide some of those updates. Uh, whatever they are, I know the kindergarten center is not gonna have a lot to, to be said, but that also is news because people are asking. So they want to know what the status is of all those things, so if you don't mind, I'll, I'll give these out and.
Sure.
Thank you.
And that's it for? That's it for comment? Okay, any other members of, of public, uh, wishing to make any public comment tonight? Seeing none, uh, we'll close the second and final round of public participation. Uh, any communications or council participation for the second round of public participation? Seeing none, we'll move on, uh, in your packets tonight, the staff reports, uh, were, uh, submitted as per normal. Is there any questions on any of the staff reports for tonight's packet? Uh, following up, uh, all of our upcoming meetings are listed on our upcoming agenda. We do have the, uh, the need to meet for executive session tonight, we will not be voting on anything, we'll be adjourning into executive session. Uh, our topic's being to discuss a matter of litigation related to one hundred school lane. Uh, with that, what is council's pleasure?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed. We will see you next month, thank you everybody for, uh, tuning in tonight.